The city council meeting, regular meeting for Tuesday, February twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-four, for the City of Orange City to order. And first, we will have roll call. Kaylee?
Tom Member Reseller.
Present.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Aspin, Tom Member Stafford, Mayor, Tom Member Graham.
Here.
Tom Member Martin.
Here.
Tom Member Zorn.
Here.
Mayor Blair.
Here. And the invocation tonight will be given by Chaplain Milton Carrero from the Volusia County Sheriff's Office, and we certainly appreciate you being here, sir.
Reading from Romans thirteen one, "For there is no authority except from God, and those that exist on earth, God institues." Father heaven, we come here in this meeting asking for divine intervention, for wisdom, and we ask that our brains become in conjunction with each other. And if your angels may surround us and give us peace and understanding, in the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Fledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one is absences. We have none at this time. Item number two, presentations and proclamations to A, Police Department.
Well, Mr. Mayor, prior to we move forward, if, if, in the agenda, that would be appropriate at this time.
Sorry, sorry, I missed that. Yes. Uh, there's a desire by the Historic Preservation Board to amend the agenda, to move agenda item eight A, uh, to be followed by the consent agenda.
To follow, to follow the consent agenda, after, after.
After the consent.
After the consent agenda.
Following the consent agenda, uh, and I'd appreciate a motion in a second for that, please, if so desired.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move. Motion is to amend, discuss item eight A on the agenda to follow the consent agenda prior to ordinance six seven five.
So can I say something there?
Yes.
If it's been seconded, if we have a second for discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we got a second, we can do a voice vote?
Well, discussion, I believe that there's one council member who's speaking.
Yeah, so if we move that after the consent agenda before the other stuff, this is a big discussion. It's gonna take a long time. And there's people here for other things, isn't there? Or there could be. So.
I think the motion was after the consent agenda. So you would hear it before you hear the ordinance on the moratorium.
Oh, okay.
It's not that big of a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Moving ahead of us to one item.
Gotcha.
So that's the motion. If you see the second, there would be no more discussion than a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So amended. Okay, now, Chief Miller, Police Department awards presentation.
Okay.
Yep, me too.
You, you, Mayor, members of council, this is Eric and Mr. Reichman, uh, members of the audience, Wayne Miller, Police Chief. Uh, you know, working as a, as a police officer today, uh, isn't easy, especially in today's society. We're under a lot of, a lot of scrutiny. And, you know, keeping the community safe is also not an easy task. It requires a lot of dedication and a lot of commitment on the part of the officers who are willing to go out and do that extra mile for their job. Well, I'm, I'm proud to tell you all tonight that our officers do exactly that. And tonight, we are gonna recognize an award. Is this on? We have new audio and video equipment.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, we're gonna recognize and award commendations to several of our police officers who, over the past year, went above and beyond their normal duties and what I would characterize as having performed outstanding acts of public service. Additionally, we have, um, three terrific citizens that we will recognize and award as they've assisted the Orange City Police Department with apprehending a criminal. So we wanna make sure we don't leave those out. So, um, what we have done in the past, Mayor, and would like to do again, if I could have, you know, you and the members of the council down in front of the dais, I'll call the recipients up. So after I read the narrative, we can have a photo op from. So you both can, two people can hold them together. We're good? We got a green light. See, we're used to looking for red lights. See? See, just a little humor, you know, and you guys look for blue lights, yeah. Okay, the first, uh, first award we have is a citizen commendation for Jerry and Jill Cornelius. Come on up, folks. And as they come up, I'll start reading the award. On December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Jerry and Jill Cornelius were watching their neighbor's residence on Countryside Drive while they were out of state for the Christmas holidays. At approximately two twenty in the afternoon, the Corneliuses witnessed a female wearing a face mask walking around their neighbor's home acting suspicious. The female approached the neighbor's home and began to force entry through the front door. Mrs. Cornelius immediately called nine one one and relayed this information to dispatchers and requested the police to respond. Mr. Cornelius subsequently ran over to his neighbor's house as the female suspect gained entry into the home. Mr. Cornelius observed the front door to be pried open and the female suspect inside his neighbor's house. Mr. Cornelius entered the front door and confronted the suspect, advising her the police were on the way. Mr. Cornelius blocked the doorway, thus preventing the suspect from leaving the way she broke in. Orange City Police Officers arrived on scene and subsequently took the suspect into custody without incident. The female suspect was arrested and charged with burglary to an occupied dwelling and criminal mischief. The suspect had a prior criminal history. Due to the quick and decisive actions of both Jerry and Jill Cornelius, the suspect was apprehended within minutes, and other than the damaged front door, their neighbor's property and all belongings remained untouched. This citizen commendation is presenting to, is presented to Jerry and Jill Cornelius for their actions and willingness to assist the Orange City Police Department in the apprehension of a felony suspect. Except for, oh, you need me to do it?
All right, everyone, one, two, three.
Yes, I do. And, and the next one, I have to, it, it's another citizen commendation, but I have to tell you, within the last hour, I still wanna read it because it's really, really important. Uh, within the last hour, Kathleen Dodgen is her name. Uh, she called, and, uh, her and her husband are expecting a baby at any minute, and we really didn't wanna have him, you know, deliver here in the council chambers, so. She, she could not make it. Her doctor put her on bed rest, but I do wanna read that for her. We'll make sure she gets the award. Well, okay, let's, my, my wife may have something to say about that, but okay, yeah. Uh, on October second, two thousand and twenty-three, Orange City Officers responded to the Dollar General store at fifteen fifty South Volusia Avenue regarding a shoplifting in progress. Prior to officers' arrival, the male suspect fled the store on foot. This information was relayed to the responding units by dispatch. Officers arrived in the area of the Dollar, Dollar General and began searching for the suspect. The suspect was observed by officers attempting to conceal himself outside a nearby assisted living facility. As officers approached, the suspect again fled on foot. He was observed near Hibiscus Parkway running through several yards but quickly disappeared. It was at this time, Mrs. Kathleen Dodgen, a resident living in the area, observed a suspicious male on her back porch, sweating and out of breath, looking through her glass sliding door at her. Mrs. Dodgen immediately called nine one one to report this activity. The suspect fled from her porch. She relayed this information to dispatch, including a very accurate clothing description and his direction of travel, which was last seen running towards the kids' pre-life, the kids' pre-life school, uh, in the same area. Officers arrived in that area and located several sheds on that property, one of, one of which had no apparent padlock on it. Officers surrounded that shed and called out to the suspect, and he didn't come out. They entered and located him inside, again attempting to conceal himself. He was taken into custody without incident. This suspect had a lengthy criminal, criminal history and was on probation and supervised release for a prior burglary of an occupied dwelling. The suspect was arrested and charged with violation of probation, resisting arrest, trespassing, retail theft, and two additional counts of burglary. It was due to Kathleen Dodgen's willingness to assist law enforcement officers and her accurate description that this suspect was successfully captured and, and arrested. So we will make sure that Kathleen Dodgen receives, uh, that particular citizen commendation. And wish her well on her future baby. And now we have an award of achievement for Detective Bree Dagley. On July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Deland Police Department contacted the Orange City, Orange City Detective Bree Dagley for assistance in tracking down a suspect wanted in connection for several gang-related shootings in the city of Deland. In the most recent shooting incident, the suspect shot several times at an individual in a vehicle. The suspect had eluded capture from the Deland Police Department for several weeks. Deland investigators received information the suspect was observed in the city of Orange City and reached out to Detective Dagley. She immediately began exploring her contacts, and she believes she would have information as to the suspect's whereabouts. She was able to develop information regarding the suspect's girlfriend's vehicle and a connection to her at a residence located in the unincorporated area of Orange City. Detective Dagley searched the area in an effort to locate the girlfriend's vehicle and/or the shooting suspect. For nearly two hours, Detective Dagley drove around the city looking for the girlfriend's vehicle. Her persistence paid off. In the area of Wellness Avenue, she observed the girlfriend's vehicle driving on Enterprise Road. Low and behold, the suspect wanted in connection for the Deland shootings was in the passenger seat of the same car. With the assistance of the Volusia Sheriff's Office, a felony traffic stop was conducted on the vehicle. The suspect was taken into custody and arrested without incident. That suspect also had an extensive criminal history. Detective Dagley is to be commended for her outstanding investigative techniques, which led to the successful capture and arrest of a dangerous armed felon. The Orange City Police Department takes great pride in presenting Detective Bree Dagley with this award of achievement. There we go. Oh, this, oh, oh, this is. Hey, you want her, you don't want me, Al. You're good. Yeah, you're good. No, you're good. That's for, that's for Detective Dagley. Here we go. We have an award of merit for Officer Jamaris Brown. Come on up, Jamaris. On August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Officer Jamaris Brown responded to the Circle K at seventeen oh one North Volusia Avenue related to larceny and credit card fraud. The victim reported to Officer Brown their wallet was stolen the day prior when they were at the same Circle K store. Through Officer Brown's investigation, it was revealed the victim's stolen credit cards were used at multiple businesses throughout the city on August ninth and tenth, charging and purchasing a multitude of items. Officer Brown responded to each and every business where the suspect used the credit card, analyzing video surveillance and gathering investigative leads from the fraudulent charges. As a result of his investigation and thoroughness, Officer Brown was able to gather information on the suspect's girlfriend. Officer Brown subsequently located the suspect's girlfriends, who provided her boyfriend's name and identity. She was aware he was involved with criminal activity. As Officer Brown interviewed the girlfriend, he developed probable cause on her for possession of narcotics. She was subsequently arrested for possession of methamphetamines and drug paraphernalia. So we used her tip and, and arrested her as well. With the male suspect now identified, Officer Brown returned to the businesses where the suspect utilized the victim's stolen credit cards and provided the information and photo of the suspect and asked them to contact the police if he returned. Low and behold, that same afternoon, the manager of Racetrack Gas Station called us and reported the suspect was in fact back on scene. Officer Brown responded and observed the suspect acting, acting nervous and loitering at the front of the store. Officer Brown took the suspect into custody for the theft and the fraud. The suspect still had some of the victim's stolen property on his person. He was charged with multiple felony charges. The Orange City Police Department takes great pride in presenting Officer Jamaris Brown with this award of merit for his vigilance, investigative skills, and dedication to duty in this incident. Yeah, we have a life-saving award for Officer Robert Hilton. Oh, sorry, thank you, Harry. You got it, you got it figured out already, okay. Uh, on August tenth, on August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Officer Robert Hilton responded to the Park Hill Apartments at ten ten Skyline Loop in reference to a call of an unresponsive fifteen-year-old female who was in cardiac arrest. Upon his arrival, Officer Hilton observed the juvenile victim lying on the floor and unresponsive. He quickly assessed the situation, checked the juvenile for vitals, and verified the juvenile victim had no pulse and was not breathing. He relayed this information to dispatch for responding paramedics and then began CPR on the female. Prior to medical personnel arriving on scene, Officer Hilton was able to resuscitate the female, confirming she had retained a pulse and was breathing on her own. The paramedics arrived on scene and were able to stabilize the juvenile female sufficiently for transport to the hospital. With the quick response and appropriate life-saving measures, Officer Hilton was instrumental in this patient recovering from this incident. Officer Hilton is to be commended for his quick reaction to a life-or-death situation, his ability to maintain his composure and his tenacity in performing CPR. The Orange City Police Department takes great pride in presenting Officer Robert Hilton with this life-saving award. Ah, see? That's okay. Uh, we have an award of heroism for Detective Bernice Martel. Come on up, Bernice. On July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Detective Bernice Martel was working patrol and responded to the Wendy's Restaurant located at twenty ninety-five South Volusia Avenue regarding a suspicious person inside the restaurant. No other information was made available to Detective Martel from dispatch. That's all she had to go on. Upon entering the restaurant, Detective Martel observed a pregnant female standing near the counter, very distraught and armed with a large nine-inch Cleaver-style chef's knife, threatening to stab customers. Prior to a backup officer arriving and without warning, the female charged towards Detective Martel with the knife, uh, raised, yelling she would kill her. Detective Martel immediately initiated lethal cover and ordered the female to drop the knife. The female stopped her approach towards Detective Martel, but she refused to drop the knife, yelling she would kill herself and her unborn baby. Detective Martel continued to establish dialogue with this distraught female, who remained in possession of the knife, upset, threatening to kill anybody that approached her. Detective Martel established rapport with the female, who, after speaking with her for several minutes, began to calm down. While maintaining control, Detective Martel provided reassurance to the distraught female and convinced her to put the knife down. She was safely taken into protective custody without incident for further medical evaluation. This incident very easily could have resulted in a deadly force situation. Detective Martel's negotiation skills de-escalated this high-stress situation, preventing it from escalating any further. The Orange City Police Department takes great pride in presenting Detective Bernice Martel with this award of heroism for her professionalism, decisive actions, and dedication to duty in this incident. And we will, we will culminate with the Officer of the Year, and we call up again Officer Jamaris Brown. You know, each year, the members of the Orange City Police Department recognize the officer who exhibits the highest level of professionalism and dedication in the performance of their duties. Such an honor is not lightly given, but is reserved for only the most respected and valued members of the organization. Officer Brown was selected by his peers as the two thousand and twenty-three Police Officer of the Year. Officer Brown has been with Orange City PD for four years and has proven himself to be an invaluable member of the department. Officer Brown always had a passion for law enforcement and becoming a police officer. This is very notable as Jamaris grew up in a very rough area in Paramore, in Orlando, where many of the people he grew up with chose a path of committing crimes, where Jamaris wanted to become an officer and protect and serve the public. Officer Brown is a graduate of the Maynard Evans High School in Orlando. He attended and graduated from Seminole State Basic Law Enforcement Academy in two thousand and nineteen. He was sworn in as a full-time officer for Orange City in two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, he was named the City of Orange City's New Employee of the Year. During his tenure with the Orange City Police Department, Officer Brown has served the department in many capacities to include a patrol officer, traffic officer, field training officer, and bicycle officer. He is currently assigned to the Charlie Shift in the Patrol Division. Jamaris is a very proactive officer, and he's one of the highest-producing officers in the agency. In two thousand and twenty-three, he produced sixty-six physical arrests, conducted eleven hundred traffic stops, issued a hundred and forty-one criminal citations, and eight hundred and fifty-two traffic citations. Folks, I will tell you to take a look at the front right now where you see Jamaris in the front of you. You don't want him in your rearview mirror, I can tell you that. I can tell you that for sure. And, and just like now, there is not a day that goes by that you never see that smile on Jamaris's face. Every day he comes to work. So Jamaris is a valued member of our organization, and he's very well-respected by his peers for his service, dedication, dedication and commitment to the Orange City community. The Orange City Police Department takes great pride in recognizing Officer Jamaris Brown as the two thousand and twenty-three Orange City Police Officer of the Year. And yes, we do believe he would even write his parents' citations, so just be very, very careful. And Jamaris, here's the, here's the lovely box for that. Mayor, that's all we have. We wanna thank all the award recipients. We really appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna move on with the agenda, onto citizens' comments. I have two here for general comments and several over here that are for item eight A, which I will hold until we call eight A. So first up is Michael Stradico. Up there, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Stradico, four seven five South Volusia Avenue, Orange City. I'm sorry? Go ahead. All right. So I'm here today just to bring upfront to you guys about our, our things that we do at our restaurant. On Friday nights, we have family karaoke, where the kids come and sing, and it's family-oriented and bring people together. Uh, we're now told that we can't have it, that it's considered an event. This is our restaurant. We have it under our awning. It's part of our business and part of our establishment. So I'm here today just to address it. I know that it's gonna be brought up in March, but I wanted to just let you all know and inform you who I am and what we're all about. Our karaoke that we do on Friday nights has a variety of different people. People with large incomes, low incomes, homeless, and so on. These people would probably not go and talk to each other or, or, or associate with each other, but they do. And now these people have come together and are babysitting each other's kids, having communication. And these are the things that we do for the community and bring everybody together. And to be told that we can't do something that's for the public, for the community, and for the families is really was upsetting, which brought me here today. So my thing is to you is that, you know, is that if you haven't been there, come by and see us. Come see it on a Friday night and see the love, the communication, the support that the community gives us and all the people that show up and have a good time. It's under our umbrella of our business and our establishment, and we feel that, you know, being told, okay, you can get a permit and do this four times a year, when it's a, it's a weekly thing, bringing people together at our restaurant. So I really would appreciate if you guys would take the time and just, you know, really think it over. Um, paperwork and everything has been, been put in. Um, and obviously, I'm gonna be at every meeting from now on. I mean, that's what I decided to do. You know, other things that we, you know, we were planning on doing, kind of put a hold on things, you know, things that we do for the community, like feeding people on Thanksgiving and feeding people on Christmas. I, we, we fed two hundred and eighteen people for free on Thanksgiving, almost three hundred on Christmas, helped seventy-six families for Christmas, and their family all got five toys for each kid. I mean, these are all things that come together, and everybody coming on Friday nights brings everybody together and brings them the opportunity to go ahead and, you know, help out each other. So I hope that you guys will make a decision to benefit us and be able to keep on going what we're doing.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Tom Idell.
Tom Idell, three thirty-nine East University Avenue, Orange City, Florida. I've handed everybody a, um, a paper of, um, Valentine Park. Uh, you're looking at the tennis courts where grass is growing and there's nasty cracks through it. They're unplayable right now. Also, there's a, um, the three-to-five-year-old toddler park where the swing sets are. All the concrete along there is, is all busted out. It's marked in yellow, I mean, in orange. You cannot, um, you can't put a stroller or a, um, a toddler to walk across that without a bad situation for liability. Um, I asked why, why it wouldn't be looked at, and the city told me that they're building a new complex. And in that new complex, we'll have a new playground for five hundred thousand dollars. We'll have a basketball, well, we have a playground there. For forty-five thousand dollars of basketball courts, we already have a basketball courts there. Street reconfiguration, sixty thousand. A dirt trail, ninety-four thousand. Community center, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. A one-point-five-million-dollar swimming pool. This has all been approved. Forty thousand dollar shade structure, eighteen thousand dollar shuffleboard court. Twenty thousand dollar outdoor, outdoor equipment, a seventy-two thousand dollar pavilion, a twenty thousand dollar storage shed, a hundred thousand dollars for ashball.
Mr. Idell, may I remind you, you're speaking to the council, not to the audience, please?
I apologize. Thank you. Can we claim my time? Thank you. Uh, pickleball courts, eighteen thousand. A volleyball court, fifty thousand dollars for sand and a net. A barbecue for sixteen thousand. Um, this has all been approved, but zero funding. Okay? Anybody that, that wants to go, uh, put their kid on a swing at five-year-olds now, they're gonna be fifteen or in high school by the time this is done. There isn't any funding, and this, the, the park needs to be repaired. All these things I stated, most of them are already there. Most of them are already there. Thank you, ma'am. I'll, I'll speak louder. Okay. For 24 years, we haven't had a Parks and Recreation Board meeting. We haven't had a Parks and Rec. And that goes out, I'm sorry, that goes out to you. It's your responsibility to do this. Okay, thank you. What I, I'm directing that question, or that statement to them. It's not only the city, everybody has to get involved. And everybody wants, has to want to be in. You gotta be in. Not one dime in Valentine Park is planned or funded, and it's going to be years before we get to that. Let's get, let's at least put it to where we can put, put our kids out there and put them on a set of swings. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number four, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. We're going to move on now to item 8A. So council, flip your page there. And this is a discussion, an action item on the shuffleboard complex, and it'll be presented by Dale Arrington.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and audience members. My name is Dale Arrington. I am the City Manager of Orange City. It's my privilege tonight to be substituting for Becky Mendez, who is on emergency leave. So I, I want to say in full disclosure to everyone, I have not been in attendance at the last seven Historic Preservation Board meetings when this was discussed. I, I do want you to know that Christine Davis, our Assistant City Manager, was present at some of those, as was Mr. Joseph Ruiz, who is our Assistant Development Services Director, and our City Clerk, and our City Attorney. So I have read all of the draft minutes for that and reviewed the record extensively, but I was not present. Just wanted to make that, make you aware of that. So let's see if I can work our new... Yeah. So our current status is really pretty simple. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are. The city's application for demolition of the complex was denied by the Historic Board on November 16th, 2023. City staff did not appeal that decision. The Historic Preservation Board has continued to meet regarding this item and work in the community regarding this item, and it is my understanding that they have two requests at this point that they're petitioning the City Council for. One is to save the shuffleboard clubhouse, the courts, and the sport of shuffleboard. And secondly, no parking lot. That's what I've seen on the signs, is no parking lot. So city staff always, their intent after receiving the denial was to come back and ask the City Council for direction on this matter, and that's where we are tonight. We're simply here to ask you what you would like staff to do regarding the shuffleboard clubhouse, the shuffleboard courts, and the surrounding area. So in this presentation, I really hope to cover a couple of things. One is to provide a brief and recent history of the shuffleboard clubhouse and courts. I would like to review with you why the City Council asked the Historic Preservation Board for permission to demolish the building and courts, and I'd like to review the options that are available to the City Council at this juncture, because you have several options that are available to you. So I just want to go over a, a very recent history of the shuffleboard facility with you. And I'm, you know, and there's a lot of information that I'm sure others are going to present to you that is really not debatable. So, you know, although it is, the property is on the National Historic District, it is a local, it is located in our historic district, and you can see these, I'm not sure I know how to do this. These two, ooh, okay. These two districts are outlined on the map. The great big blue box is the National Historic District, and the smaller area is our local historic district. Properties located within both of those, not debatable. The clubhouse was added to the Florida Master Site File in 2004, and I don't know that I'm accurate enough to do this. It is, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going to miss it. Sort of, sort of there. Ah, it's good enough. I think I got it. It's one of the, the contributing structures that I attempted to highlight with the laser. And the courts and canopies were added to the Florida Master File in 2018, and that was a formed date of 3/17/18. It is a contributing structure to the city's district, and it is on the National Register of Historic Places. So none of these items were ever being debated. I think you all were fully aware of that. I do want to point out to you what it means to be on the Master File. And the Master File is a listing of properties that is held by the State of Florida, and people file to get properties listed on that. It is an inventory of historical sites throughout the state. And being on the National Register is also an important designation. Being on either the Master File or the Historic Register does not mean that the State of Florida, I know sometimes I criticize the state or the federal government for preempting local authority. That is not the case here. Neither one of those preempts your local authority. All of the power that is given to the Historic Preservation Board through these important designations is done through local ordinance. And we have on our books a local ordinance that is the Historic Preservation Board, and that is Section 2-103A, which says the provisions of this section apply to any structure contained in the Orange City Resource Map, must be on the map, and the Florida Master File. So that is what gives the Historic Preservation Board the authority to review and approve or deny demolition, demolition permits. So... They... I'm having a hard time here. There we go. The shuffleboard clubhouse has been an important part of Orange City history, no doubt about it. I don't, I'm not a shuffler. I know that people are. I had to go to the Orange Book and get my history for the, the club. It's been located in different locations, the clubhouse structure, and eventually came to be on the property that it's at with the shuffleboard courts. And in 1944, it had 78 members, and it grew pretty exponentially, so that it had 198 members in 1965. And in 1999, the club shuffled on Mondays, Tuesdays, and on Saturdays. I think shuffling is what they call the sport. So, you know, pretty impressive, and it was involved in tournaments, which are held seasonally. I think the, the, it's October through March is the main season for tournaments. So very, very involved, so, in our history. So why did the city ask for a demolition permit? Well, there were a number of reasons for that. First is that over, over years, and documented by our Parks and Recreation Department, is that there was declining membership in the club. And it started noticing that in 2018, where the club membership was nine. It went down to seven in 2019. COVID-19 came, and like almost anything, it did, you know, there was no activity at the club. We had construction in the area, and that also diminished the ability to use the, the club courts, in that I believe they were harmed by the construction. The city during this time also engaged in a master facility plan. And the master facility plan took, took place, it started before COVID and was eventually adopted during the COVID period. And the master facility plan, like many parks and recreation, like many plans, they call for things that may or may not come to fruition. They're a plan. The plans are accepted by the City Council. They're not adopted. They're accepted by the council, and they're subject to change. In this master facility plan, as you'll recollect, city staff wasn't entirely on board with the consultant when he was presenting it, and we had quite a bit of discussion here in the chambers. The master facility plan that was accepted by the council called for really several immediate things to occur. The first one was that we needed a new police station, and that police station should be located on Ohio Avenue on a piece of property that is located behind Main Street Bank, because it is large enough to accommodate all of the police department's needs. The second item that happened is that the fire station, which is located on Harley Strickland Boulevard, was designated to be replaced somewhere in that corridor that is accessible to Enterprise Road, Saxon Boulevard, and Veterans Memorial Parkway. The fire station there, as you know, is a double-wide mobile home, and it is a pole borne and a storage shed, and is just inadequate for our firefighter needs, and has had seven major repairs to the mobile home due to inclement weather disturbances. That was item number two. A third item was that we needed to continue to work on our downtown campus, and the interim plan that City Council agreed to was when the police department building was vacated, we would look at relocating the people on the main floor of City Hall and the clerk's office over to the plate, the soon-to-be vacant police department building. And we would move the Engineering Services Department into the same building with planning because of the alliance of those two professions and the ability to have people who are building things be able to talk to both an engineer and a planner in the same room or same building. As you know, right now, when they're in a permanent location, which they're not currently, they're located at the utilities plant, and that's a homeland security facility, and the public may not go there. So we have to call them over to meet with people in a different location when it's necessary. So that was the immediate items that that plan addressed. It also took a look at Waver Hall, and it noted that Waver Hall was probably too small for the senior center use that it is given. And if Waver Hall is replaced, then the Finance Department and the downstairs utility billing clerks could fit into that building and free up more room in City Hall because it's rather cramped. Neither here nor there. Long-term plan, don't know when or if it will ever be accomplished, but that was the plan. So the next thing that happened after, I, just so I, I don't lose my place, we subsequently hired Woodard and Curran, who helped us put together a different, a way of looking for grant funds for implementing the fire, the police building, and at that time, we added on a public works building because we have outgrown the facility that is in existence out there. So anyway, at the installation, we went to install, this was COVID times, and we were trying to be more germ-free. So we decided to get away from paper towels and roller towels and wanted to put in hand dryers. And with the installation of the hand dryers, we had some electrical failures and a, a small fire. And so the building official was called in, the hand dryer guy said he couldn't install the hand dryers till we fixed the electric problem. So we called the building official in, who came in and gave us a report. And the short version of the report, I'm not going to belabor it, I know others are going to do that, is that the building needed to be close to the public and either razed or substantially improved. During this timeframe, oops, I just did it. I undid it. During this timeframe, we also engaged in a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which Mr. Idell was quoting one section of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to you earlier about improvements that are, are part of the dream of what could be done at Valentine Park, but are not a set in stone. It's dream big, and here are all the things people want, knowing that your next step after you put together your big-picture items is to winnow it down. So we adopted a Parks and Recreation Master Plan that provided pie-in-the-sky improvements to most of the city's parks. And the City Council, you had three public hearings on this, and all of these ideas of what should be in the parks were ideas that were, were shuffled up through the public participation process. So during your, when you adopted this in April of this year, you also allocated additional funds for further refining what goes into Valentine Park to include development of concrete plans of what should be put out there. We have not started that. You appropriated funding for that. You appropriated funding for that. I have sat on it, waiting for this to be taken care of. Just want you to know, we have not gone out to bid for, um, hiring the, uh, Parks Planner to work on any of this. And, uh, we shouldn't until we kind of figure out what we're doing here. So, if you want to fix Valentine Park in the meantime, that, that would be fine, we can come up with ways to do that. But you need to know that the intent here was that we come up with a, a full design for Valentine Park before we invested in things. And we also had a lot of discussion about what kind of ballgames we were playing out there. And that's important because your fields are designed differently for the types of, um, private ballgames that are played, whether it be Little League or Pony League or, or some of the other leagues. We wanted to make sure we had our, our contracts in place. So, we developed the Parks and Recreation Plan, and that the part here that's blurry that you can't read, um, says, "Remove and relocate shuffleboard courts, see Valentine Park." So, that's, uh, a picture of the downtown shuffleboard area, and, and it just says, "Consideration should be, be given to, to move those over to Valentine Park." Based on that, that was one of your decisions. Another, uh, decision point on this is the amount of parking that we have at City Hall. And our current code, just for the uses that are out there right now, uh, requires a hundred and fifty-four parking spaces. And then, if you put back in the shuffleboard courts, you need to add thirty-nine more spaces for, you know, a grand total for all of our campus, which would be shuffleboard, Waver Hall, um, Town Hall, the clerk's office, the police department, and the fire department. We need a grand total of one hundred and ninety-three spaces, according to our code. At the present time, the city has sixty-two paved spaces and forty unmarked dirt spaces. So, I, I want to say that everyone is talking about how this is going to be an employee parking lot. And that was never our intent, although employees will certainly benefit from it. Uh, but one of our primary intents was to really fix the parking problem that we have at Waver Hall, which requires in and of itself forty-five parking spaces. And the intent was also to add full, more handicapped accessible facilities for them and a better drop-on, drop-off point at Waver Hall. As you know, right now, and I don't know if you've been there when the Votran buses are dropping off senior citizens, they park on an incline. I don't know what that incline is, I, I don't know. But the bus parks a little bit on a s- on a hill. And the bus driver puts the, the bus in a stationary position, and then he has to help the elderly people out the bus and onto the sidewalk because they're, they're walking down the hill in the bus. The people who have, um, wheelchairs or scooters on the bus have a lift they can take in the back of the bus. And that's what drops them off at the platform that goes into Waver Hall. So, we did a sketch plan for the, um, Waver Hall, and it was really to completely change. It's not been engineered, it's not had a feasibility study, we didn't do any core samples or anything. Um, but we just sketched it out. And we wanted to completely reorient that parking lot or ask an engineering firm to see if it was feasible so that we could provide a front drop-off point at Waver Hall and, uh, uh, more hard surface parking for those folks. And it would also be shared, um, by city employees. But it did not increase the number of parking lots to compensate for what current code currently allows. It still leaves us with a, a deficit. Um, and I, I mention this because those one hundred and two spaces that are there are not all appropriately code spaces. They're dirt spaces that we created, uh, makeshift in the back of Oak Park, uh, where the Waver Hall employees park as well as city employees. They include dirt spaces that are on property that we rent at, uh, the police station for evidence storage and the, um, evidence facility. It's on a dirt lot, we park there, we park in the alley, we park on the grass spaces at Waver Hall. So, the one hundred and two, um, represents our total number of spaces. And I'm sorry for belaboring that, but I think regardless of whatever decision you reach, um, regarding the shuffleboard court, it's going to be important to address the parking situation for Waver Hall and for our, our downtown campus. So, parking was a reason. Oh, and these are pictures of our parking lots. So, um, they're, they're pretty full, you can see, uh, cars parked, um, pretty much in all of the places in front of Waver Hall. And, and, and you can see it even on days when City Hall is not in operation. Christine, uh, forwarded one of these pictures to us. When she came in to work on Veterans. I don't know that I can go back a slide, Christine. Oh, thank you. Um, can you tap on the one that was Veterans Day?
So, it was this one when I came through to park up behind the clerk, and this was me coming off of the little alley right here, and I went, wow, that's really busy. And then it dawned on me later that that was always, you know, City.
Yeah, so, so they run the Meals on Wheels program five days a week, I don't know which days they're closed. So, even when we're not here, they're pretty busy. And, and the point is, they fill it up, so. I'm skipping that, we already went over it. So, lastly, um, so why did the city, you know, as part of the budget process, you budgeted funds for the demolition, you budgeted funds for the parking lot design, and you budgeted funds for a full design of Valentine Park. And once the budget was approved, City Hall moved forward and filed the application, uh, with the Historic Preservation Board. They, and you, we filed this application for the owner of the property. So, you're in a sort of unique situation here. You are the owner of the property and you're the city council, so we have to, um, represent you on both courses on this. So, the Historic Board, the Preservation Board heard you the request on November two. That was their first meeting on this, and they disagreed with the build- the chief building officials' report. And they asked for another opinion to be performed by either an architect or an engineer. So, the next meeting of the city council was on November twelfth. And at that time, I brought it up to you that they had asked for additional reports, and they may, at that time, were also having discussion about how much it costs to build a parking lot versus how much it would cost to rehab the facility. And they would, they requested, from what I can tell from the minutes, a comparison study of the two. We discussed all of this on November twelfth during City Manager's Report, 'cause I had short timeframe to turn this around. And the city council said, "No, just keep going with what you've got and let the Historic Preservation Board make a decision at their next meeting." So, their next meeting was November sixteenth. And at that time, they denied your request. And the appeal period ended on December fifteenth. So, the city intent here was always to bring it, once it was denied by the Historic Preservation Board, back to council for a decision on what you wanted to do. You're the property owner, and I'm not in a position to make those decisions. I'm only your representative on this. So, I, um, explained when I did a walk-around with Mr. Idell that we would bring you a more in-depth report of what your options are. I haven't really done so, um, did not go out and, uh, do any additional studies. I, we knew that we would be coming before you to find out what you wanted to do. And studies may be required to initiate what your druthers are, but I wasn't going to, uh, do any additional studies in between the time that the Historic Preservation Board denied your request and the time that I received staff direction from you. So, uh, city staff has been on hold until we get before you. I just wanted you to be aware of that. So, if it seems like we're missing information, it's because from the time the request was denied until the time we come to you for further information and direction on what you would like to do, city staff has been in a holding period. So, that's where we are now, is the Historic Preservation Board denied your application. And I know they've been working hard in the meantime, uh, to prepare for tonight's meeting. And, uh, they had some good reasons for denying your application. So, when you look at the criteria, there's eight criteria for denial. And they went through these, and they found that, uh, it was inconsistent with five of those. And I'm going to just briefly go through those with you, 'cause I'm, I, I would imagine that's part of their presentation. The five criteria that they found this inconsistent with is the building is of such interest or quality that it would reasonably meet national standards for designation on the National Register or as a national historic landmark. Yep, it's on the National Register already. You knew that when you applied. B, the building structure or, the building structure or object contributes substantially to the ambience of the district and the area's sense of historical place. They really believe that the structure should receive upgrades and improvement to continue to fulfill its historical mission. The, um, other options were E, definite plans exist for redevelopment of the property if the proposed demolition is carried out, and those plans will have a positive effect on surrounding properties. No parking lot. They do not feel that a parking lot will positively affect surrounding properties. F, reasonable effort was made to relocate or save the building. The, um, city was applying for demolition of this. The city was aware that it was in a bad state. So, that was the purpose of requesting the demolition permit. And H, demolition of the building has been recommended by the building official due to unsafe conditions. They disagreed with the building official's determination. So, with that, they recommended denial. So, here we are, um, going to discuss, I hope, what to do next. And your first option is, um, agree with the H P B. As you know, their decision is final. They have determined that you cannot bring this, this building down, they have that authority. We've missed the appeal period. So, you can bring the clubhouse and the shuffleboard courts back into use. I think in order to do that, we need to have an assessment and a scope of work prepared by a licensed professional, a design professional, who would assess the structure and determine what needs to be done. I believe it's more than putting a coat of paint on it. We, um, need to take care of the electrical problems that were identified. We need to provide handicapped accessibility. We need to repair the steps that are out front. We need to provide handicapped accessibility to the, the clubhouse, the inside and the restrooms that are accessible from the outside. We need to address the air conditioning, or at least the heating systems for the building. And there's some, uh, floor and pier work that needs to be done. So, I think we need to have all of that addressed by a, a licensed professional who comes up with a scope of work for doing it. The same needs to be done on the courts. We need to look at the actual concrete structure and determine what needs to be done there. We need to look at the benches and the canopies, and as you know, part of the awning was ripped down by a hurricane. So, you know, we need to take a look at that. I believe we also need to engage in, uh, some community discussion on this to determine whether you want lit shuffleboard courts at nighttime or just daytime shuffleboard courts. Presently, you know, there, there are lighting structures there that would enable outside, uh, play at nighttime. And I think you need to decide on the operating structure, uh, whether or not, uh, you want to have it privately run as it was done in the past with a private shuffleboard court, or if you want it to be city-run and operated. Lastly, you need to address the parking issue, um, especially if there's going to be, you know, high-volume usage during the week where people may drive to the, the, the courts. We need to make sure that we have a designated parking area for the shufflers. So, that's your option one, uh, which is to say, yes, we agree with the H P B, we want to bring back shuffleboard and do what we need to do here. Your second option, um, is to move forward as planned. And that's not such an easy option for you, 'cause it would require that you reapply, submit the application once again to the, um, Historic Preservation Board. I think that, um, their activism, I've received a, a blank copy of a petition form that Mr. Idell dropped off. I don't know how many signatures he correct- he. I don't know how many signatures he correct, he collected. And I've seen the newspaper editorials and the, um, signs up around town. You know, which leads me to think you're going to get the same decision. But I could be wrong, don't know, can't predict the future, but suspect that they will deny your request for demolition upon a second application. I want you to know that they have a great deal of authority. They can request more information. And they can postpone consideration of your application should they choose to do so by requesting additional information for a period of one hundred and eighty days. And I would have to come back to you and ask if you want me to provide it or not. Just letting you know that. But once they render a decision, you could direct staff to file an appeal with you. And that is where you would have the authority to override what the, um, Historic Preservation Board determines. So if you choose to proceed as you had previously planned, you've got a process that you need to follow that is not easy. The third option that you have is that you postpone action and consider something else. And this is why I belabored the points a little bit about what constitutes, uh, the need for a demolition permit. It is being on the map and it is having a Florida master site file on it. There's two Florida master site files on this property. One for the clubhouse and one for the actual shuffleboard courts themselves, which I would interpret to include the benches and the awnings. So I believe that they could theoretically be separated out. If you, so the options that are different, um, are, are ones that I've seen floating around in the public uh, only by looking at, uh, Facebook on occasion, which as you know, I try hard not to, but every once in a while, it sucks me in. And I, I see, you know, oh, use the clubhouse for something else. You know, use it as a, a meeting room. Um, open it up for different groups to be able to come in and do activities there. There may be clubs who want to use it. Um, as you know, Waver Hall, uh, we do run out to other groups, but it is, um, not available because its primary use, Monday through Friday, is as the senior center during the daytime. This would be another venue that could be used by people. Uh, the, uh, and you could still take down the courts if you saved the clubhouse. I would not recommend doing it the other way around. There was mention on Facebook about turning the courts themselves into community gardens. I saw that somebody kept putting that forth as an opportunity and somebody else kept saying, no, make them cornhole. So. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things you can do with it. Um, you know, if you took the courts down, yes, you could, uh, uh, potentially use it for parking. So, and I think, uh, as part of this, no matter what, I would like for you to address the parking situation that we've got going on at, at Waver Hall and with city use needs. Um, there are other options available to you. I hate mentioning them because I know every property is near and dear to people. There's Oak Park where, you know, we as- usurped a small portion of it and it is a dirt lot. It is actually a mud lot when it rains, uh, that is used by the employees at Waver Hall and city staff. Um, Oak Park could be repurposed. Uh, the area that is currently, um, next, it would be north of Waver Hall. Needs to, could be made into a single entry parking area. Um, we own a undeveloped lot on the south side of Graves Avenue that is located next to the temporary city hall building that we're leasing while we remodel the utilities department. That could be designed. Um, typically, a parking space, including access aisles, uh, requires three hundred and fifty to four hundred square feet of area, not for the space, but for the drive aisles, the stormwater and the required landscaping provisions that go in there. A space is two hundred square feet, but you almost have to double that to, uh, meet current code requirements. So those are the three options that are available to you. Um, that's where you are right now. Uh, staff looks forward to receiving some direction from you so that we can, uh, get off point here. Um, and I thank you. And I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have of me. Or you can wait until after others have presented, they may answer some of the questions. Thank you so much.
Emil Scipione, four thirty-five North Oak Avenue, Historic Preservation Board member since 2020. I want to thank-
Mayor, matter-
Yes.
No, mine's gonna be very brief. Yeah, okay. I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Mayor Blair and the rest of the city council for this opportunity to present the rationale behind our decision to deny the request of city council. The Historic Preservation Board, as was previously mentioned, is created by city ordinances as an advisory board. Our primary role is in our name, Historic Preservation. And we are to ensure that historic, the historic assets of Orange City are preserved for future generations. One of the council's role, primary roles, as I see it, is to ensure a bright future for the citizenship. These two different objectives can sometimes be in conflict, which is the reason we're here tonight. While we can see council's concern for additional parking as our city grows, our board has an obligation to carefully analyze the council's request. Tonight, we will show how this request did not meet the established criteria of the Historic Preservation Board review process, specifically Sections two dash one oh three point four A, number two, and Sections two dash one oh three point five A, B, E, F, and G. I am going to be turning this over to, the rest of the presentation, to Tom Idell, who will give his considered a posi- a position and details on the maintenance and structural components of the issue and show how the four-point inspection did not meet the threshold as required as a supporting document. I E., and I will partially, uh, quote from the ordinances, "A report is required from professional licensed engineer or architect with experience in rehabilitation as to the structural soundness of the structure and a sustainability for rehabilitation." After that, Tom Hewitt, through his extensive research, will show how the request for demolition did not meet the criteria, as I previously mentioned, and also educate us all on the rich history of the shuffleboard courts, canopies, clubhouse, and its activities. Before I relinquish the podium to them and forgive me for being a little philosophical, previously I stated that a conflict can arise between the council and Historic Preservation Board because of our primary roles and objectives. I would like to remind all of us that there also exists an opportunity for conflict resolution. Our goals need not be diametrically opposed if, as we maintain a delicate balance between progress and our link to our past. There need not be an argument to, uh, who wins, but rather join in our commonality, which is what is best for Orange City. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Tom now.
Thank you, Skip. Thank you, Dale, for the fair, unbalanced report. I'm gonna go through this quick because Tom has put most of it together. And you've heard me enough lately.
Are you, are you presenting the PowerPoint?
Yes. No, uh, that, yeah, there's four, there's four or five photos that I have. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, while those photos are coming up, um, we have close to two hundred, probably about a hundred and seventy-five signatures. These signatures are from within this area. Um, everybody that lives here, there's a lot of people that are here that their, their property touches the shuffleboard court, or at least on the square here. So, um, there is legitimately, uh, quite a bit on the petition. And I appreciate this, the, um, the community getting involved. It's about time that we, and we need that. Um, I'm gonna start with this, um, first, I'd like to welcome the St. Petersburg Shuffleboard, uh, Club here, the president and the CEO. We just finished playing shuffleboard on all the courts. Um, I also learned that each court, each court costs about fourteen thousand dollars apiece. And there's sixteen courts there, so we're over two hundred and some thousand dollars worth of court there. On, this is an email to, from the nor-, to the Northern District website of the shuffleboard. This is October eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Okay, so that's prior to all of these COVID and all these other, um, things that come up. And the subject is Orange City. "We received word that any double tournament on November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, at Orange City has been canceled. Construction work on the parking lot and surrounding area, which was initially expected to be completed by the end of October, will now extend into two thousand and twenty." Let's fast forward to two, two thousand and twenty-four, February twenty-seventh today. That, that area is still the mud pit that it was the day that they were denied in two thousand and nineteen, which predates all of the, the hand dryer and all the other, it, it predates it all. They were shut down and they weren't allowed to come because the, the, the parking wasn't there. When they came back and asked to please let us play shuffleboard, don't worry about the building, they were told that the benches were unsafe. There's a half a dozen benches in there, painted, ready to go. Um, so it really was, um, they lost, they, they lost their, their, um, charter. I'm gonna go real quick, I apologize. Real quick, this report, I've been to you three times as a private citizen. We've asked for a second opinion. Um, staff told us that city council denied us getting a second opinion. The report was supposed to be done by a, a, an architect or an engineer that is qualified in historic buildings. Okay, we did a four-point inspection for two hundred and seventy dollars, three after-hours to put this report together. That means, on the way home, do me a favor, stop by the shuffleboard court and take a look at it. That's really what was done. Um, I'm gonna bypass that because no one has come back to us and said, you know what, Tom, or you know what, Board, you're, you're wrong and it's falling apart. No one has come back and said that to us. Um, I'm gonna move to, I apologize, I'm gonna throw my glasses on and off. Workshop number four, number one. And again, it, Dale was right, this is all pie in the sky. It's all what we're looking for down the road. And we need, we need a police station. Number one on that list is to relocate the police station, which would, which would do away with every police car, every animal control vehicle and every citizens patrol cars that are out there. So that's at least eighteen, twenty vehicles will immediately move when we take this and we move it away. Number, number two on the list is to relocate. I'm not gonna go over that. Number three, relocate utilities and finance, as Dale mentioned, to Waver Building. That Waver, Waver Hall was donated to the city twenty-six years ago by Waver Langstrom. She gave us a hundred thousand dollars, which today's money is four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of building there. And we're, we're just moving the senior citizens out. So now the senior citizens are gone. So now, where do we need parking for senior citizens? Because as soon as this implements and it gets started, the police station's gone, Waver Hall is gone. There's no, there, there's no need for all this parking because everything that's a problem has, has gone. I'll take, um, I'll take the next one. I'm blowing through this quickly because I know that someone else will take the time to go over the little details. Number two, no, I'm sorry, the next one. I mean, back to, uh, workshop number four. Number, and it would be phase two. Thank you very much. All right. Upon, upon complexion of the, upon construction of the fire station, sixty-eight will demolish the existing fire station. Okay, number four, demolish Waver Hall. Tear the building down, it's twenty-six years old, it's a brick building. It was donated to the city to be a senior citizen complex along with the shuffleboard. We're demolishing a tw-, uh, something that was donated to the city and we're just gonna level it, it's twenty-six years old. City Hall is ninety-seven years old. That's, to tear a building down, that's, that is today worth four hundred thousand dollars, to put a parking lot up is insanity. Okay, now we'll go to the next one and I'll wrap this up real quick. There's the pie in the sky and it's great. And look at it. Now there's a two-story building, that city hall, where that's supposed, where, where, where I proposed, someone said that I, I said to do away with the park. I proposed that you could have spun the park and put it where we were gonna put the garden. Oak Park could have just been moved. All it is is a fountain and three benches. But here, um, the city gets everything they wanted. You got a police station and everything that the community needs. We're getting a new police station, we're getting a new firehouse, we're getting a new town hall. And through all of that, this, the shuffleboard court still sits there. It sits there. The shuffleboard court is one hundred percent green. It's a permeable building. There are drains between each, in the gutters of each one's, uh, one of the courts. The building is off the ground. So every time it rains, and it's been designed that way because it flooded. When I did the inspection, I found twenty-four inches of water stain from probably Hurricane Donna. But it was three foot of water in that building at one time. We have everything and yet the, the shuffleboard court remains. Now, when you go to the, to the parks plan, you don't even see this stuff here. Where, where you're saying we're gonna put in a, um, a, a, a garden, you got a new city hall. Waver Hall is completely gone, being demolished. What, what amazes me is that we're, we're putting together, and again, we need this, and I'm glad that we put this together. We do need police department, we do need fire, it's time, we're growing. Okay? None of this is funded. The only thing that's going vertical is the multifamilies that are growing in this city everywhere and that are gonna put kids in them, that are moving in now. It's an opportunity to have something instead of, you know, tearing something down. The last one, and I didn't put it on, is that the last slide I gave you? Okay, I apologize. The, um, the Parks Plan, what it shows is that you're gonna democ, we're gonna do everything we wanted to do, ex, but we're gonna do away with all this, but we're gonna demolish the shuffleboard complex. How do we take a Parks Plan? And technically, a Parks Plan is a landscaping plan. Who's gonna landscape before they build all these buildings? You're gonna put new trees in, you're gonna put in a garden, you're gonna put in a gazebo, although we got a gazebo across the street. We're gonna put all these things in and then you're gonna tear it out. We're gonna put all these things in, and then you're gonna tear it out. It's a, it's a, a Parks Plan is landscaping. You're planting trees, and you're doing things like that, but yet you're doing all this construction work, you're gonna be tearing buildings down, and you're gonna be putting up a, a two-story building. Doesn't make sense, you don't landscape before you start. That's like, um, putting the, putting the floor down and then painting the ceiling. I appreciate everybody's input through all of this, it's been amazing. Um, the camaraderie of, of community after COVID is, is, I am amazed, my jaw drops, because all, everybody in this community has come together. We tried to put together something before this to have a block party, but then we found out that it was, you had to be a Philadelphia lawyer to fill out the applications and worry about each vehicle. Luckily, last week, I won a raffle at, um, the Cirrhosis Club, they had a little thing, and I won a raffle for a free night. And the community's gonna get together on a Saturday, I get it from eight in the morning till midnight, and we're gonna have a, a, a open dish, or a covered dish, like they used to do. And the whole community's gonna come, and the city council's invited. Let's all get together and look at all of this. I cannot see tearing this down and then deciding that we're gonna, now we're gonna move the firehouse, and now we're gonna move the police station. Because when all this stuff is gone, we're not gonna need all that parking, and that building is not on fire. It's not like we have to fix it today. Again, it's permeable, the water sits in it. It, it's not ponding, but when we blacktop the whole thing, you're gonna take two acres and put blacktop on it. We all know the police station had sandbags in front of it for years. It's gonna happen again. Again, thank you very much for all the time that we've put into it. This has been very difficult because we can't talk to each other. I would have loved to have, like you had a couple Saturdays ago, or last Saturday, you had everybody in here, and why can't we put the historic board, and this board together, and not have to worry about sunshine? Nobody's gonna make any money off of this Shuffleboard Complex. Nobody, it's not something where somebody's gonna do something shifty, there's gotta be a way we could sit down and discuss this, and, and come to a conclusion. Thank you.
My name is Tom Hewitt. I live at 1060 Tappan Circle in Orange City. I am also a member of the Orange City Historic Preservation Board. I have a PowerPoint for you guys that I've put together now. It's about 28 pages, uh, but it, it mainly a lot of bullet points, and I, if, with your permission, I'd like to go through as much as possible. Okay? All right. Oh, I got it? Oh, jeez. Okay, that one, that one goes up? Oh, there we go. I gotta read from, well, let's see. Oh, good, I can read it. All right. In 1918, this is a short chronology and history of the Shuffleboard Court and complex. In 1918, the Austin and Wilson, Austin and Wilson Land Company, which was a 20 by 20 structure, which is the centermost structure inside the Shuffleboard Court, was moved from 120 East Graves to 201, which is here, Holly, and was used as town hall until approximately 1929, when the city hall was completed. All right? On February 5th, 1944, the Shuffleboard, uh, Orange City Shuffleboard Club was officially recognized in its position that it is now. Okay? 1955, the 1918 building moves across the street, moves again across the street, to 200 North Holly to replace the existing clubhouse, and is placed on its pillars to elevate it. 1975, the 1918 building was structurally modified to give you both a north and a south wing to, to the building because the Shuffleboard Club had been growing, they needed more room. Okay? Uh, 19, and, sorry, August 24th, 1998, the Village Improvement Association sells the 1.64 acre property to City of Orange City to fulfill a gift from Weyva Lindstrom for purpose of building a senior center. 2004, the Shuffleboard Clubhouse and Courts were added to the Florida Master Site, or thereabouts, uh, file in the city's National Historic Register as a contributing structure, and I'll explain that after a bit. 2012 to 2016, the city remodeled both bathrooms and front porch. 2016, the city replaced the wooden court canopies with metal awnings. 2020, the city notices multiple failures to the Shuffleboard Court, making them unusable, and cost to repair and/or replace was denied by council. Up, uh, there was a date unknown, didn't say anything, but there was apparently a minor electrical fire inside the building, prompting the city to conduct an assessment of the building's safety. March 2021, PDCS LLC is contacted to conduct an inspection of the facilities. April 27th, 2021, PDCS LLC issues a report stating that the facility is dilapidated, this is directly off the report, issue, uh, the facility is dilapidated and is in the opinion of the AHJ that the building slash structures be raised for public safety and health concerns asteric lid-based paint. Another date unknown, the city placed do not enter, uh, enter on the facilities, and the facility's closed, and unsafe signs on the building, and soft fences, soft fence, the little plastic fences in the area to try to keep people off the courts and out of the building. June 8th, 2021, city council reviews and approves Orange City Master Facility Plan by CPH. February 28th, 2023, city council approves to remove Shuffleboard Courts and Clubhouse to make way for additional parking at city's administrative complex. April 25th, 2023, Parks and Recreation Master Plan adopted by Resolution Number 272-23. November 2nd, 2023, a special meeting of the Historic Preservation Board meeting staff informs board of HIST-06-23-3306, which is the demolition permit for the city Shuffleboard Clubhouse Courts and Canopies located at the property 200 North Holly. November 16th, 2023, uh, the Orange City Historic Preservation Board denies the demolition permit for the city Shuffleboard Clubhouse Courts and Canopies. February 27th, which is what we are today, we're presenting, uh, our reason, uh, reasoning behind our denial for the demolition permit to city council during the appeal of a denial. Reasons for denial, the criteria. Now I have to pull out, if you, bear with me just for a second. I have to get our original, uh, piece of paper that we were given. All right, here we are. So that I can, so that you can, uh, when I'm reading this, you'll understand the reason why we answered some of our questions the way we did. Just give me a second. All right, these were the criteria for, number one, the building or structure is of such interest or quality that it would reasonably meet national standards for the designation on the National Register of Historic Places or as a National Historic Landmark. As our city manager, Dale has stated that there is no doubt, the property is located within the city's National Historic District, and the clubhouse and courts are listed as contributing structures to the Historic District back in 2004. By 2016, both the clubhouse and courts and canopies were listed on the master, master file. All right? Now, on our list, what it said was that we had was the property is located within the city National Register, and the clubhouse and courts, the canopy structures are listed. He says, but according, it, it says, given the noted deterioration to PDCS, the structures remain ineligible for individual listing. Now, if, I have on C here, property does not have to be listed individually on the National Register to hold some weight as one listed as per letter dated 11/17/2023 by the Florida, uh, Historic Registration. And is that on the, uh, that's not on. Uh, can, can you pull up the Florida, the letter from Samantha? I gotta, I gotta get it out because I can't see that far for some reason. If y'all excuse me just for a second. I know I have it in my system. I apologize. All right, can, can I come up? I got a fairly loud voice.
The thing is, is you get recorded for the record.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you. Okay. The letter was from, uh, Sam, Sam Schmidt of the Historic Preservation Board, and, or Samantha Schmidt, Schmidt, from the Florida Department State Division of Historic Places. And it states, I'm, I'm just gonna read the part of it that's significant. The specific property you inquired about, I'm sorry, to contribute to a Historic District, properties must meet three criteria: age, which it does, significance, which it does, and integrity, just as they would need for an individual listing. As such, the National Register views both individual listing and contributing, uh, contributing status as equal. In other words, a property is neither in, is either in the National Register with full honors that the designation accords, or it is not. Okay? Now also, they do state, as Dale has suggested, that the city is the ultimate power in this. It's your property. You could do what you want to with it. And it states that so in here, so I'm, I will not dispute that. Okay? But it's, it was listed as, one of the criteria we're doing was an individual listing, and it does not need to be listed as individually. Can I get back to my PowerPoint, please? I'm sorry, I tucked it under. All right, thank you. I'll get it.
I, I certainly hit from the beginning, I believe you were.
Okay, yes. Yes. Ooh, okay. All right, our next thing was the building, structure, or object contributes substantially to the ambiance of a district and the historic area sense of place. Right? The site was active until 2020 and contributed vibrancy and recreational opportunities for the residents and guests. Active recreational and social interaction of the Shuffleboard Club was part of the substantial comp, contribution to the sense of place. The historic value of an 80-year-old structure creates an emotional bond to a sense of place. One of the, the next one we had was the building or structure or object is of such design, texture, material, detail, and unique location that it would be of great difficulty and/or expense to reproduce. The site it is on is the site of the Shuffleboard Club that was started in 1944. The building, structure, or object is one of the last remaining examples of its kind in the neighborhood, the county, or the region, given. No, no, no objection to it whatsoever. It is not, it is a frame vernacular, there's plenty of frame vernacular buildings in the Definite plans exist for redevelopment of the property, if proposed, demolition is carried out, and those plans will have a positive effect, I missed a T there, on the character and, uh, of the surrounding properties. As with what was listed in our criteria, even the staff said parking lots do not contribute to the character of the surrounding properties. Okay? Now, according to the Master Facilities Plan, Phase One, all right, program sequence page 26, step three, relocate utilities and finance to Weyva Building. Shuffleboard to remain. Page 27, step four, demolish Weyva Building, relocate to city-owned parcel, and construct city building. Shuffleboard to remain. Page 27, step six, construct surface parking field, maintaining stormwater vaults. This is on existing unpaved lot between Shuffleboard Courts and existing paved lot at Weyva Building. Page 32, construction of new municipal building, two stories, square, 12,000 square feet, minimum parking requirement is 48 spaces, shown in the plan of 56 spaces. Shuffleboard Court to remain. Page 33 shows additional lots across the street in front of Stormwater Pond next to New Fire Department. Now, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is what we were, they were using for us to deny demolition, on page 151, preliminary recommendation, Valentine Park. Number, number 11, they want to put a new community building, as we heard. Number 21, new possible location for Shuffleboard and Bachi Courts. Page 152, number one, the opportunity to expand parking for public facilities. We know we need more parking, and we're not denying that fact that we need more parking. All right? Number two was remove and relocate Shuffleboard Courts, see Valentine Park. Number three, a new building shed, storage, or park maintenance and gardening tools approximate where the Shuffleboard Clubhouse now stands. Number four, the opportunity for expanding Oak Park with vegetable, community garden, and open space for seniors behind existing Weyva and the Shuffleboard Buildings. Number six, add tree canopy to proposed parking lot. Number seven, Weyva Hall to stay. All right? Now, the two plans, both master facility and parks and recreation, parking and tree planting, and we know it's just a, we know- we know it's just a plan, it's not done, classed with each other. In other words, the parking on the, from what we can see on the Parks and Recreation Plan, the parking remains this way. All right, whereas on the master facility plan, where they build the new building, parking begins to cross in front of the building, so thereby giving people a nice roundabout, which is almost in the same spot that WAVA Hall is. So, we are debating on the Parks and Recreation Plan, which removes the shuffleboard complex and replace it with a parking area attached to existing parking area and a new parking around WAVA Hall. Right, then the master facility plans removes WAVA Hall, builds a new municipal building and parking. So, I don't know if we're doing to, I don't know, all right? The municipal code, uh, Orange City, Florida, Appendix A Land Development Code, Chapter Eight, Zoning Regulations eight point seven, Supplemental Regulations Paragraph Seven, Off-Street Parking Loading and Unloading Requires. Municipal, state, uh, county, state, federal, and community buildings, four spaces per each one thousand square feet of floor area. Now, I have this down as WAVA Hall, two thousand one hundred eighty-two square feet, minimum, eight spaces. And I said, we have ten spaces behind WAVA Hall, because I've, I've counted them, we have ten spaces. Now, I understand you're saying forty-five spaces are needed, and you're probably using it as a meeting area, correct? Which is one space per every forty square feet. Okay, I, I overlooked that, and, and I will give you that, I overlooked it. Okay, the clerk office has one thousand forty-seven square feet, has a minimum, will have a minimum of six spaces. There's eight spaces behind the building. City Hall has eight thousand one hundred and sixty-six square feet, a minimum of thirty-two spaces. It has thirty, twenty-three paved spaces, and an additional, from what I could count, it, by what I counted across that day, a, additional twenty-three spaces that are not paved. Sometime after nineteen seventy-five, the city was requested by the shuffleboard club and or VIA to landscape the area behind the club, and in return, city could park trucks at the back of the property in an orderly manner. And this was out of our story of Orange City, forgot the A, uh, page number two seventy-eight. All right, does a parking area upon demolition of the shuffleboard complex contribute to the character of the surrounding properties? No, a visual, historic, and social gathering place would be diminished and destroyed no matter where it would be moved. Number F, reasonable effort was made to relocate or save the building, structure, or object from collapse. The city has been maintaining the structures, now, we had the seventies and that should be the, the nineties, and has owned the property since nineteen ninety-eight. Two thousand twelve, two thou- the, the bathrooms were remodeled. A wooden canopy was replaced, uh, repla- uh, sorry, the wooden canopy was replaced with metal on the courts. And twenty twenty, the city deemed the intensity of the court cracks, failures, make the courts unusable. Cost estimates to repair the courts were consulted and denied by council. The Orange City Historic Preservation Board has not been able to determine if the city has had a report from a licensed engineer or architect with experience in rehabilitation as to the structural soundness of the structure and its suitability for rehabilitation as requested by the board. The board's request for a second opinion and cost for rehab of the facility was denied by council. Since two thousand twenty, uh, the building has sat vacant, and with the report by PDCS LLC, the building has been closed for being dangerous, insanitary, and unfit for human habitation or use per International Maintenance Code, IMPC. Now, some of them eat at a stuff. G, retention of the building or structure would promote the general welfare of the city, providing an opportunity for the study of local history, architecture, and design. Retention of the building and facilities promote general welfare of the city by providing a historic recreational facility for the public's use that it is, uh, that is in its original spot. Instead of seeing a historic plaque saying, this was here, now it's somewhere else. Demolition of the building or structure has been recommended or ordered by the building official due to unsafe conditions. The shuffleboard car, courts, club, and court has been deemed unsafe by PDCS LLC four-point inspection invoice of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Requests for building inspector to come before the board for questions about report and pictures were made on November second, twenty twenty-three, when we first got the issue of you wanted to demolish the courts. Requests by the board for a second inspection and renovation inspection was denied. Not, and, and I didn't see it, and that's probably because it was on the city's city manager's report. I didn't see it on the November twelfth council agenda. So, I, I didn't know that would be in your report for that, that's the reason why that is there. PDCS LLC report of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one of an historic property was not presented to the board until November second, twenty twenty-three. After decision was made to demolish facilities, after council approved both master facilities plan and parks and recreation plan. November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Orange City Historic Preservation Board Meeting Minutes states, number four, point A, paragraph five, no reasonable effort was made to relocate to, or to save the building. In fact, because the Development Services Director failed to send the twenty twenty-one four-point inspection report to the board, the complex is in the course of being demolished by neglect, and that is in our minutes. November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, motion to deny the demolition permit application as it does not meet criteria A, B, E, F, and H of the demolition ordinance. In addition, the Development Services Director did not properly notify the board of the four-point inspection results in twenty twenty-one, per the demolition by neglect ordinance, section E. Section two, one oh three, D, demolition by neglect. A property owner's failure to provide ordinary and necessary maintenance and repair of an historic property or resource that result in injury or loss to exterior features, permanent damage, or destruction through abandonment or lack of maintenance will be considered an act of demolition by neglect, and the standards of this chapter apply. Staff normally provides Orange City Historic Preservation Board with information on the property permits for building, remodeling, restoration, and demolition. Most of these are from private owners, and we usually get the information when they are ready to apply or when someone reports an issue. Board then decides on the action to be taken with the permit through the property owner. Formal action can be taken through code enforcement if necessary. No issue was reported to the O H, uh, the Historic Preservation Board about the shuffleboard facility until demolition was decided. As a city is the property owner, who does the board report a neglected building property to council or staff? Does the code enforcement apply the same to city municipal property as with the private sector? Routine maintenance of the city's facilities falls to the departments under the city manager. The city shall not, the city did not maintain the shuffleboard club or court. In summary, the city shuffleboard court and clubhouse is of historic value, both as a place of gathering and social events, and being listed as a contributing structure on the Orange City National District. The complex contributes substantially to the ambiance of the district as an eighty-year-old sports complex in Orange City. The city's redevelopment plans, parking lots, do not have a positive effect to the character of the surrounding area. Could the parking spots needed be placed behind the shuffleboard building and along the east side of the property line? No reasonable effort was made to relocate or save the building or courts. The city failed as property owner and custodian of an historic building, structure, and object as per Comprehensive Land Use Plan, CLUP, and Land Development Code, LDC, Conservation Element Goal Three. Preserve, protect, or provide for appropriate reuse of significant archaeological and historic resources in the area. That same policy, policy three point one, point two. The city shall continue to enforce its LDC and applicable state guidelines regarding documentation and protection of suspected or known significant archaeological or historical sites. The criteria used for these standards and guidelines shall include protection of resources listed on the National Register of Historic Places, the Florida Master Site File, the Local Register of Historic Places, and those to be discovered in the future. Identification and evaluation of historic resources. Review the procedures for all development which will impact upon historic district. Methods of mitigation and negative impact to the historic resource. Every effort shall be taken to preserve the resource. Where preservation is not feasible, alternative, the resource shall be relocated, information regarding the resource recorded, or elements salvaged for further study. There should be a second opinion on the condition and suitability of the complex to be saved, rehabilitated, or the building structure moved in lieu of raising the building. Although the city has the ultimate say in this appeal, I believe we would be in a different position if this issue was bought be- before the Orange City Historic Preservation Board soon after the twenty twenty-one inspection report was completed. The shuffleboard clubhouse and courts should be saved. After all, we are the ones to preserve our history for those who follow us. If not us, who? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Cobb, I'm at four seventy East Wisconsin Avenue in Orange City, and I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Board. As you can see, we have a, an issue here at hand, and, and you as the public, as well with the city council, um, have to make a decision, um, as to what needs to happen. Um, I don't know if you all received an email from Kim Redding regarding this recently? You, you've read it, okay. Um, I would suggest highly, um, that you read it because she makes some valid points. Not only was the shuffleboard prior to the VIA owning it, it was owned by the Dickinson family. As you know how prominent they were here in the city before leaving it to them and then to you. Um, you all have a, an important decision, it is a, um, a community resource, a community gathering, um, opportunity that can be repurposed to open up and, and start our games again. Um, so I hope you all take this into consideration, and I thank you all, mayor, city council, and guests of, uh, city council's meeting this evening, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move into the speaker, uh, request. Uh, first is Christine, public input, Christine Page. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Christine Page, um, nine twenty Jackson Street North, Saint Petersburg, Florida. Uh, I'm the executive director of the Saint Petersburg Shuffleboard Club. I started as a volunteer in two thousand and five when there was a concerted effort to revitalize our club, and I stayed with the club, um, became a board member, and then the board president, and then by the time we grew enough, it became my full-time job, so this is what I do full-time. Um, I am also a shuffleboard player, so I do understand shuffleboard, and I have nineteen years of experience promoting shuffleboard and promoting our club and, and growing our club. So, um, historic shuffleboard clubs in Florida are becoming a really precious commodity as they, um, as they get torn down, honestly, um, I urge you to save yours. Shuffleboard is a quintessential Florida sport. I can only think of highali also as a Florida sport, and that's way too complicated for me to play, so, um, I stick with shuffleboard. Highali, yeah, yeah. Um, it's a sport that everybody plays together, um, regardless of gender, age, socioeconomic background, uh, athletic ability, physical disabilities, we all play it together. It's a really, uh, rare sport that, that you can do that with. Um, at our club, we have, you know, recreationally, we have families, kids, parents, grandparents all playing together. We have a league night, which you'll see like thirty-something hipster guys all tattooed, and their player team is playing against a bunch of eighty-year-olds, and they're all laughing and having a great time, and it's, it's just a wonderful sport for that. Um, it's the only sport I know in which an eighty-year-old woman can totally dominate it over a twenty-five-year-old man, and it's, and they do, and it's, it's, it's fun to watch. Um, having access to a sport like that in your city is a wonderful asset for its residents. Um, a much, a much better quality of life than a parking lot, honestly. Uh, in two thou- in two thousand and five, um, I heard a lot of the same comments that you probably hear from people here in your city, like, well, oh gosh, the place looks terrible, or, you know, I drive by all the time and no one's ever there. You know, this is the things that we heard, um, and a group of people in Saint Pete decided that this, our club needed to be revitalized, and that if, you know, the best way to save a historic facility was to actually use it and get the community involved and get the community to understand its worth. So, um, in two, in two thousand and five, our club, which I should mention, is the largest and oldest shuffleboard club in the world. So, when I start telling you our numbers, you're gonna start thinking, ooh, those are big numbers, if she, but we have, we have seventy-six playable courts down from a hundred and ten, um, so when I, when you hear me talk about the numbers, that's what I mean. Oh, may I go a little over? One minute, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna fast forward, so we started a Friday night shuffleboard to get the community more involved, and, and it worked, slowly but surely. So now, we're up to twenty-seven hundred members, we have eight employees, we have a hundred volunteers over the year. We have a annual attendance of fifty thousand people, um, that's the members and the public. We have a thirty-five thousand dollar maintenance budget a year, in which we take a lot of the burden, um, of the city for, for maintenance of the facility. Um, just this weekend, we have a hundred out-of-state people coming to play in a tournament with about two hundred people. We have a hundred and fifty event rentals, weddings. We have a hundred and fifty event rentals, weddings, parties. Our county's tourism board uses us as an asset. They bring travel writers in and talk about this historic gem. Our club is magical, and it's a wonderful historic asset in St. Pete, and your club is a gem. It really is. And it, it could be, it could be the same asset for Orange City. I would love the opportunity to discuss with you further the things that we did to bring back the club or even host you at our club, and so you can see what I'm talking about. Your courts are in great shape, actually. Okay? It could be played on right now. So I just urge you guys to save the club and revitalize it and work with the organization, you know, help an organization come in and do it together. So, thank you.
I'm Sarah Krasak, and I live in two oh nine East University Avenue. I've lived in Orange City since two thousand and eight. I moved down the street in two thousand and twenty. I'm a native Floridian from Miami. I grew up watching my great-aunts, uncles, family members playing shuffleboard. So my son's bus stop used to be right across the street, right there next to the shuffleboard, and I love it. I thought that when we moved here, we'd be able to participate, but it wasn't being used. I didn't know why, so now we know what's going on. I would love to see it thrive. I would love to be a part of the community that plays. I have friends in Sanford area that play. I go to New Smyrna Beach. They have a thriving shuffleboard club over there. It's great to watch the families play and people come out. Weather's beautiful. So I would really love to see it stay where it is and be part of this community. As far as parking lot and traffic, I walk approximately five days a week right down this street here. I have never seen the parking area over here full like I did in that picture that I saw. I walk anywhere between eight o'clock in the morning and about eleven o'clock in the morning, and I don't see a problem with the parking. But again, it's five days a week, and during that time, I'm familiar with council on aging. I haven't seen any issues there. So I would like to see the shuffleboard stay and be a part of that and even help within the community to have that thrive. We've got a beautiful community here, and COVID-nineteen really hurt people. So it's time that people get out, meet each other, and start enjoying where they live. Thank you.
Alan Krasak, two oh nine East University, Orange City, three two seven six three. I lived right down the street. One of the reasons why we bought the house and in the historical area is that we wanted to see the history of Orange City stay and to enjoy the things that Orange City had to, to give everybody that was here and to have a community that can stay together, work together, play together, just to have something where everybody just joins together and does things. So it was one of the reasons why we moved into the city, and we liked the older house. And when we heard that the shuffleboard, well, we seen, we're wondering, why isn't it being used? And we're like, something's going on. We investigated and found out that it was closed down and didn't know why. And like my wife said, we've never seen thousands of cars parked over there. I don't know how those pictures ever were made like that, but I, I do walking with her, and I drive around the city, and I've never seen it loaded with that many cars. So I think to save that shuffleboard, to have a community come together and get people to join together and meet each other and, and have some fun, it'd be something that would be great for this city. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Swain. I live at ten twenty-four Twenty-Fourth Avenue North in St. Petersburg. I'm the President of the St. Petersburg Shuffleboard Club. And before I get started, I wanted to thank you guys for letting us speak, even though we're not Orange City residents. And I would never deign to tell you guys what's best for the city of Orange City, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what shuffleboard means to me and my community. When I first moved to St. Petersburg, my husband and I were looking for someplace to go to meet new people, to become part of the city that we had just moved to. And, you know, I don't know if you guys have heard the concept of the third place. So the first place is gonna be home, where you feel comfortable there. Second place is gonna be work. And then the third place is somewhere where you can go, feel like you're part of a community. Think about Cheers, the bar, right? We decided we didn't wanna hang out at bars that much, so we needed to find something else to do. And in St. Pete, we have Friday night open shuffleboard. So we went to go play. He had to drag me there, because shuffleboard was for old people, and I wasn't gonna do that. But finally, he convinced me to go, and we found a home there. That's where we have the majority of our friends now, our shufflers that we met through the club. It brought us into our community. It encouraged us to volunteer. I've spent countless hours volunteering there, countless hours playing there, countless hours meeting new people, hearing their stories, welcoming them to St. Petersburg, talking about things I never thought I would talk to them about. During multiple hurricanes, we've had one of the older shufflers that was around from, she was Hall of Famer in the nineteen sixties. She stayed at our house. We never would have met her without the St. Petersburg Shuffleboard Club. It's such a fantastic place to bring community together. And I think when you talk about shuffleboard, there's a couple of different types of shuffleboard you think about. You think about really competitive tournament play, and those are very serious shuffleboarders, and they have a great place in our community. But then there's recreational shufflers. Who wanna go out on a Friday night, hang out with their friends, or a Wednesday night. As Christine mentioned, we've got league Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. People are, come there four or five times a week just to play shuffleboard and hang out. So I just wanted to encourage you guys to think about, not just the historical part of this, because that's very important, but think about it as a community space that you can offer to your citizens as a place to come and meet together. We often have birthday parties at our club. I had my wedding there. It's just such a great community place. And it, the city of St. Petersburg has really leaned into it, and it just is a place, it's a draw for tourism. It is such a fantastic place to go. You guys have Blue Springs State Park right here. Imagine pulling campers out of that into downtown Orange City because they can come play at the shuffleboard courts. You know, it's just a really good opportunity for you to add the space for your, for your residents and your citizens. Thank you for having me.
Else that would like to speak to the council? Okay, seeing none, we've heard from all of our, everyone who's.
I think you may wanna hear from the building official.
Absolutely.
He is president, and there are provisions in the code that enables him to make an inspection. It does not have to be an architect or an engineer. I think he may want to address some of those issues.
Great, thank you.
Members of the council, mayor, my name's Warren Correia.
I am the building official, and I am employed by PDCS LLC to pretty much run the operations of the building department. I'd like to just kinda mention a couple of things that kinda caught me off guard. One that the city manager mentioned was my authority as a building official and what duties and responsibilities I have. My responsibility is to you, as well as the citizens of the city, is to life, the safety, and the property. And that's exactly what I did for that report. I was requested to give a report based on the conditions after the, the, I guess, the, the fire for the hand dryer thing. I'm gonna touch on that because that permit was actually issued for waiver hall. How it, how they attempted to put a hand dryer in that building was a little bit confusing to me. Right after that, because see, that permit was issued April twenty-third, and my report was requested on the twenty-seventh. So after I did my report, gave that to Baker Mendez, and they discussed it further as far as what, what could they do to, I guess, present it to you all and to the historic board. So from there, my position on my findings is I found that the conditions were, were really unsafe. If you look at the stair, stair approach, I'm not talking about the, the courts. I'm talking about the building itself, per se, because the courts did have some of its own issues pertaining to the covering of the seating arrangements and, and things like that. The, the building, the stair approach, the door openings, the floors, and I think the floors, based on my report, for the two additions that were put back on in, in the seventies, may have contributed to some of that deflecting of the floor system. And also, as far as the ceilings, you could see in some of the pictures, I think that Tom presents you all that. They, they showed some signs of buckling and so on and so forth. So, so we're, I think we're in agreement on that, that there's some deflection going on, and it does need to be checked. So the report, the report that was given was basically on the conditions that were found. The stairs, like I said, walking surfaces, and also some of the, the appeals to, like, the facilities, the bathrooms, and so on and so forth. It was mentioned tonight by Tom that there were some renovations done to the bathrooms. We, I don't think we have any records of any work being done in the bathrooms. So, so I would have to go back and do some research on that. The, the issue of, of the report, and a couple of things that, that I said in there, as far as ending with the lead-based paint. I, I personally was certified EPA to do lead-based paint assessment as well as inspections. Assessments would contribute to a, a report that would tell us how to do the repairs and, and also remove the asbestos or lead-based paint. Okay, there was a process to that. So I have, I have certificates for that. Currently, they're not active. So, so with the lead-based paint thing, and, and I think it was said a couple of times that I don't have any experience in that and so on and so forth, but I do. Okay? So, so with that, to the second thing, there's, there's two, there's two positions I hold. I hold a position to you all as safety, life, and property. And then I have my personal side, which is, if I may. I have, I grew up on an island that was established in sixteen sixty-one. I have extensive history working on historic buildings that dated back to sixteen sixty-one. I've done historic work on buildings that were done in the eighteen hundreds, churches, so on and so forth. Granted, it was on an island, but it was, you know, it was still historic buildings. Do we have any water? No. It's a Block Island, so I'm from the northeast. No offense to anybody, but I'm from the northeast. It's, it's off the coast of Rhode Island. And like I was saying, it was established in sixteen sixty-one by, by a merchant named Block, and so they named the island after him, so. So anyways, my, my, I, I have history in that. I, I was a contractor. I did a lot of historic work. In nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, the, the company that I worked with, he was, he was basically my business partner. He was by name, he was, it was Celico Construction. We built, we built a Victorian-style, I, I, I thought I had brought the pictures, but I didn't. We built a historic vintage house. It was turret roofs and so on and so forth. And our company, his company, was put in the Architectural Design Magazine because it was in the era, a lot of people are not building Victorian houses. Let's face it. So, so I, I do have experience in that. And, but I keep that separate, and I, I want that to be clear that I have to keep my construction background separate from my building code because in construction, we're not always safe, to be honest, okay? We don't take those into consideration when we're building. So when, on my side, I have to look at the building codes and how they're, how they can be enforced. As far as, as far as the report's concerned, and ending it with, you know, having, having the building demoed or raised is based on the conditions. That's, that's all it was. I, it's not that I want it to be done or torn down in any, in any way. My, I was just given the code sections, what needed to be, you know, what did need to be stated, and that's up to the powers that be to make the decision whether it was to remain or if it was going to be removed. If it was going to be remained, I think the city manager put it best, there was two options to do some, to do some alterations and to bring it back to life, let's say, separate from the courts. The courts, it was good, good voice today about the, you know, that sport and so on and so forth. But the building itself, if they're going to do renovations, they still would have to come through me. And this is where we're in agreement that they would have to get a, under the existing building code, it takes historic buildings into consideration that you have to get a professional designer to give us the specs that would be given to a contractor, and then the contractor would submit that for permitting. So I think that's what, what we're in agreement of is that we have to have a engineer give us that report if so, you know, desires, if that's where you're gonna go with that. So other than that, I don't, I don't really have much more to say that I support what I wrote, and I'm, I'm in agreement with some of the things that they said, but in retrospect, I, it's gonna be the code, and that's, that's how I look at it. Do you have any questions?
Follow with the, the historical code versus they still have to come to you and all that?
Well, the Florida building codes, yeah, the Florida building code's set up in sections. So we have, we have current day buildings. So recently, the building code just took an effect for the twenty-twenty-three cycle. That cycle's for new construction, so on and so forth. Well, in that publication, they also have existing structures. So existing structures would be considered what we're looking at here in nineteen twelve. So in, in chapter twelve of the Florida Building Code, existing, it, it has a chapter just based on historic structures. And I think the other Tom put it best. He, he laid it out as far as what, what, what that building, as far as those options for the building and the historic society and so on and so forth. That, that's all outlined in here as well. And, and so, again, but it leads back to, to what you were saying. It leads back to this particular code, as well as the property maintenance code, has, has some small language in it. It leads back to this particular code, as well as the property maintenance code, has, has some small language in it for historic because it refers back to this. So, uh, this is pretty much where I make the decision on how to, let's say, review, inspect something, and then try to come up with some sort of logic on, on presenting that.
Your inspection, is that building stable enough if it was to be relocated somewhere?
Just, well, well, I, I am, there's a couple of things that I'm in disagreement with. I think, as a whole, the buil- the building as a whole is not historically, doesn't hold a historic place with me. That's just my view, uh, set aside from this. And, well, I think there's certain components that were installed back when they built those that, that are not considered, um, historic values. And that, that it talks about, as far as some of the apertures, uh, whether it's a, you know, the windows, they're, they're aluminum-cased windows. They're not, they're not, you know, weight window sashes, they're not, you know, the sills and so on and so forth. So, there's other things, uh, when you look at the siding, um, the signings is, is for sure, it fits some historic architectural, but I think the application to it wasn't, wasn't correct. Because it seems like they have, I don't know, uh, like trim boards that cover the union of, of certain areas of that building, for whatever purpose. Excuse me. Is it hot in here? So, so, wi- with that, if we could, if we could just separate those two and bring back the first part, which would fall back under the existing buil- building code. If they're gonna do renovations, and they want to put, let's say, that's the smaller portion, I think it was four hundred square feet of sorts. If they were to put that back, remove those apertures, that's there. I think that would, in my view, okay? I think that would bring back more of a historic value to that property as it is. I'm not making any suggestions of trying to sway anybody's decision or anything, that's just my view. If you leave them on there, and it's, a- as the property has already been deemed historic, okay? In the pres- preservation area, um, then I, I think the assessment of that building to, to bring it up to a standard, because right now, I believe we're all in agreement, it needs to be fixed. You know, whether it's shoring up a little bit of that flooring to bring it up, uh, uh, there's some ADA requirements that are gonna be required, you know? So, so that's, that, that's my position on that, or my opinion on that.
Can, can you tell us a little bit about your personal history, your certificates and things of that nature?
Well, well, I, this is, this is all of my certificates I have, and, and license, and licenses. I have, um, and this is what they call the Code of Ethics for me. And, in the first line, in the first line under the, it says for, for me is to be certified by ICC and the state of Florida. First li- ri- uh, line reads, uh, "Place the public's welfare above all other interests and recognize that the chief function of government is to serve the best interest of all the people." So, I, I do this job for everybody. I don't just do it for, uh, this section of town, or this, you know, this, this business, or so on and so forth. But I have, I have three state licenses, and then I have, uh, twenty-three certifications. And I man- I manage them, pay for all my education by myself, PDCS does not pay for that. They would, but I, I owe no one, because that's on the last line here. So, I, um, you know, I have all of these. Plus, I'm a graduate of Johnson-Wells College, certified chef, uh, uh, so, so, uh, that's why I was on the island, because I, I, I worked in a family-owned Italian restaurant for twenty, twenty, twenty-something years, my younger years, dishwashers and, you know.
Can you do me a favor and pull up my first page of the report? The, there's, I, I submit four pictures, the first page of, of the-
Oh, his report, I got it.
I might have to get close to read this, I apologize.
Do you want to stay on this side, where at least that's my proposal?
Just qualification for myself, um, I'm a water intrusion expert. I've been in, in doing it since, um, a child, I come from a long family business, grandfather and father. My grandfather and father did it, I've been doing it my whole life, I got it, thank you very much. Um, and I've been vetted by the city, I've been hired as a, uh, as a consultant for free because I'm on the historic board. I've spent, um, hours and hours on, on this project and the city hall, um, which is the next agenda item.
So, Tom, you say you're one of the intrusion experts, do you have any certifications in that?
Yes, I, I can get to people that, uh, as far as certification, now I'm retired, no. But, um, the city, at the city hall, um, and looked in for all the historic buildings that I worked on, which are identical to the city hall. I, I, I'm sure, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment. You said you were hired, weren't you a volunteer for the city? Okay, so make sure.
I, I offered to the city, when we came up and we found out that there was six hundred thousand dollars worth of work on the city hall, I volunteered to be the consultant.
Speak into the mic, please, because it gets recorded, they'll come over.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew you weren't actually an employee, right?
No, I, I've done this for free, because I'm on the historic board, I wouldn't make a nickel. But I've been up on, on the manrail, all the way to the top, from, from top to bottom of the building, and in and out, on and around, this one as well.
Thank you for that.
First, the, the first one I, I look at is, uh, the year built, we, you have three hours at ninety dollars and two hundred and seventy dollars. That was your building inspector that you sent out to do that, am I correct? His, his name is in here, um, William, William Wobert used to be the building inspector for the city, am I correct?
Okay, I'm, I respectfully, I'm not up here to be challenged, okay? I'm, I'm just, uh, here to give my, my side of the air.
No, it's, it's not a matter of challenge, I'm, I'm, I'm-
I'm not here to debate, debate.
And, and I appreciate you stopping. I'm gonna read what I didn't read before, based on the information collected. We'll go, we'll go to number one, primary building structure, floors, interior walls, ceilings, roof, damage due to water intrusion. We asked that we had further pictures to show us water intrusion. I went into the building after three years, there has not been one leak, there's no stains on the ceilings. The only thing that's, that's active is there is sheet rock tape that's cracked, okay? The floors aren't buckled and moving, it's two buildings that were put together, and they're about a half an inch apart. Okay, there is nothing in there, there is no water intrusion, and there's nothing, what you're saying, that water intrusion is causing settlement, now I'm not questioning, I'm gonna read this. Settlement, foundation, major concerns to pillar placements. Pillar placements are moved a little bit, but that's only because there, there's three buildings put together. The second one is the kitchen cabinet, absolutely, it's wired out, completely, it's a maintenance that was never done. There's a, um, shuffleboard court, pedestrian seating, the courts themselves were saying were cracked. We just played with St. Petersburg on every court, and they're impeccable, you can have a tournament tomorrow. So, the courts aren't an issue. The pedestrian seating, we went over that, the aluminum cover is brand new. But what amazes me is in three hours for ninety dollars and two hundred and seventy dollars-
Okay, well, okay.
I'm, I'm just asking.
Okay, wrap it up, please.
Okay. The, the aluminum cover is saying that code number fifteen-five-thirty-one, there's no way all this was done in three hours. Can I have the other side, please? And there's only a couple more. Thank you very much. The window, the window units aren't up to code, they're, they're window units, you replace the unit, you take the unit out and put the new unit in. Okay, so that's structurally no problems to the building. There's a heater in there, a baseboard heater that's been disconnected for twenty years at least, it's not even hooked up. The electrical system isn't too wired, given, but we're talking about a shed, not a building. There's paneling on the walls, you remove a panel, you got an access to, uh, it, it's extremely easy to upgrade that electricity in a shed, not a house. The, um, primary structure, open conductors, utility boxes, fuses, there, there are boxes that are missing with caps, the photos show that. That's a maintenance. They're talking about GFI, that's a maintenance. The GFIs were never done, and they should have been done years ago, I don't know how somebody wasn't electrocuted. And again, I thank you for, for mentioning the dryer, because I couldn't figure out why the gates were so far apart that no one was in the building, but we were installing dryers, thank you for that. The, um, the outdoor receptacles are, are enclosures, not GFI, they should be, the shuffleboard courts, discontinued hazardous knob and tube, no, it's disconnected, knob and tube, it's been disconnected for twenty years. We're, we're getting there, thank you very much, I'm yelling at- Um, I, I, there's two more items, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Now, this is, this is never gonna, once it's gone, it's gone. Shuffleboard courts, discontinued hazard knob and tube, there's no, that's not even an issue. I don't know anything about the, um, the plumbing seems to be fine, there's a couple of open things that should have been closed. What amazed me is none of the pictures showed structural damage, none of the photos showed any leakage, and, and after three years going into the building, there's zero, um, water intrusion in that building. It amazed me. Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Idell, uh, Mr. Farino has certificates, he's-
Absolutely.
Professional, right, right, I'm just saying, to me, he holds a lot more weight than, than what you have to say. All right.
Mayor, if, if I could, just to probably, I'm just, make a few comments on this, where we are just right now. And that is, you, you have the, the city's chief building inspector, who's telling you a little bit about what his company found as far as the condition. And that goes, why, why that's relevant, as well as the, what Mr. Idell was saying, that's relevant to the three options, because that's what we're here for tonight. Getting back to this, is the three options that this council, um, is being asked to choose from by your staff, so the staff can receive direction as to which way you want us to go. But I, I have one question for, for this, for the she- the city's building inspector, because I think it's relevant for purposes of clarification. Sir, on page three of eight of the staff report that was pre- prepared by Becky Mendez for this, for the council's consideration this evening, the bottom of page three, it says, "According to the Florida Building Code, or FBC, the structure is no longer considered historical for the purposes of applying modified building code requirements due to the substantial modifications made to the original structure in nineteen seventy-five. Therefore, any renovation of the building must meet all FPBC standards for a commercial structure." Do you agree with that? Okay, that is relevant, and, and humbly, I present it to you for purposes of your consideration of the three options uh, that are given to you this evening, for purposes of what are you looking at if you're going to rehab this building?
Time for council discussion, just hold on, we're not, this isn't gonna get out of hand. Has there been any effort made by the Historic Preservation Board to move the building, or to consider that?
No, we didn't get the-
Come on up, speak to, in the mic.
No, sir, when asked about the, uh, building, because we asked prior to us receiving the demolition permit request, when asked about, uh, what was going on with the shuffleboard court and clubhouse, we were told nothing. We were told that no decision had been made. And then on the second of November, at a special meeting for something else that we were going for, we were handed all this paperwork and told we need to make a decision. Now, we put it off till the next meeting, but at the next meeting, we were told, we need to make a decision. So, we made the decision. And that's where we were. So, no, nothing by us has been done, because we haven't been given any information other than what you see in your packages. All right, but I, I have one question, if I may. Because the, the extended pieces of the shuffleboard building is of nineteen seventy-five, is when the additions were made, okay? As of right now, they're forty-nine years old. When they turn next year, fifty, does that not qualify as the entire building? And, well, that's what, a- and that's what I'm saying, to me, I have to look in the future, too. If y'all don't get it done by this year, then they turn fifty, then you have to follow the code again. So, that's, I'm, I'm just saying, historically, it's, it's, to me, it's still a, 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 a building that was built back in nineteen eighteen with additions. All right, I'm sorry.
Okay, council, I'm gonna weigh in on what I think, uh, I think, you know, I trust what our building inspector says. I think it is a hazard, uh, the building, it's, uh, a safety hazard, a health hazard for people. I'm supporting option two, but I would like to put a caveat in there, that if the Historic Preservation Board would like to, possibly look into moving it to another location, I would be open to that. I did contact someone at the Barbara Bill Pioneer Settlement, and, uh, she's requested that I send pictures in the history of this building up there. So, uh, I think, you know, considering public health and safety, that's a bargain, I would be mourned in what we need at this point. It's great that, you know, the people from Saint Pete come and, uh, you know, tell us about their community, but that's a huge retirement.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm not, you, I'm talking now, not, not you. So, at any rate, I'm gonna support two, and the more you wanna talk back, the more I'm gonna support it. So, I wanna hear what the rest of the councils thinks.
I, I highly agree with you, because I've been listening to all of this. And as we all know, the state is growing, we're gonna be growing, and we're gonna need that room. And I don't think, because we need parking spaces, that's making us less, uh, interested in the history of the, of the town. I love this town, I love what it represents, that's why I'm living here as long as I have. But, we have to look towards the future as well. And it occurred to me, could we not move that building elsewhere? It will still retain its historic, uh, value, just does it have to be here? Where this is, you know, between everything here, all this and our, uh, departments and everything that are gonna grow as we grow, we're gonna need a place to park, you're not gonna wanna park five blocks away. So, I, I agree, I think that we need to take into consideration where we're gonna put this parking. And I don't think it's that invaluable to, to move the building elsewhere. And could not the, the shuffleboard, uh, court be, you know, reinstituted wherever it goes? So, I, I have to say I do agree, sir.
Yeah, I, I also agree with number two option. I think the building will never, especially never be ADA compliant, I don't see that ever happening, and I think that's a biggie. And, yeah, I don't have a problem with possibly relocating some of those courts, you know, depending on how many people are gonna play. You know, I, I did a little thing today, it's two hundred dollars to get four sticks and eight pucks, you know? So, time's up, I, sixteen courts that we have is thirty-two hundred dollars, just in material to play the game, so. Yeah, I'm gonna go with option two.
I took a lot of notes, I'll try to make this quick.
I need to answer some questions that were, or, or some comments that were brought up, because I think we need to clarify as a council some things that may not be correct. The Wawa Hall, move-in Wawa Hall, was on the, the bill, if you will. When we had our strategic planning, and we thought about our, our plans for our master facilities and our parks and rac- When we had our strategic planning and we thought about our, our plans for our master facilities and our parks and rec, these were all, like you said, dream, okay? Or, or thoughts. We put our thoughts together, and we, and we came up with a plan, right? And why do we come up for, with a plan like this? It was for the community, so that we could have recreation for the community. And that's why we discussed doing the, um, the rehab of, um, Valentine Park. Was to have things for the community there. That, right? That's what we discussed. The building, we rehabbed Alberta's. Uh-oh. Sweet Caroline. Check, check. Ready? For the record, I don't do karaoke. Okay. I know. So, what I was gonna say is, we did rehab Alberta's cottage. I don't know how bad that was, because I wasn't on the council then. And so, is it possible? Yes, it's probably possible to rehab that little square house, original house, right? So, my question is, is if we did rehab the house, what are we gonna do with it? Because it's four hundred square feet. We are fourteen thousand plus people in this community. I don't know how many people are in Saint Petersburg, but fourteen thousand, okay? And then we don't know how many people are gonna play, but what is that building gonna be used for? It's obviously too small for a clubhouse, right? So, that was one of the things that I was thinking about. The next thing is, it says, um, one of the comments was, the city gets what they need. That's not a complete true statement, because the city is rehabbing the police station, the fire station, um, public works, the parks. Why are we doing this? For our citizens, so that they can have proper facilities for the public safety and all the other sectors. If you've ever toured these facilities, they work under very bad conditions. So, we are doing this to make it better for our, um, police force, fire, et cetera, so that they can have a better quality of service for our residents, right? So, when you say the city gets what they need, we all up here consider, I can say, we consider everybody when we make our decisions, so that's not completely true. The parks and plan, landscaping plan. Parks is also about recreation and things that you put in there. It's not just landscaping. So, I wanted to make that point. The police station, blacktop, retain, isn't there gonna be a retention pond in that plan we talked about? If we were to remove everything, I think we talked about that also. Okay. I'll get to the important things, because I wrote a lot. One of the comments was, do not put a parking lot there, because it takes away from the quality of the neighborhood and things like that. I am all for bringing the community together, playing shuffleboard, having great clubs. That's what I would like to see for our city. But, this area is congested, and then somebody said they had walked by between nine and eleven, and those parking lots were not as full as those pictures. I come here a million times, and I see the vo-tran dropping the seniors off, and those parking, there's hardly ever parking spots in those areas. And it is, yes, it's some city workers. It is, um, it's mostly Wava Hall that I see. So, you know, that's just my opinion. Wava Hall has the, um, Meals on Wheels, right? Is that what you call it? The Council on Aging. And they are growing very fast. They're outgrowing that building. And so, we didn't talk about demolishing the building right away. We talked about repurposing, I think that's what Dale said. Repurposing maybe some, um, some people into that building. So, um, I don't think that, these were just all ideas that were thrown in the pot, so I think everybody needs to understand that. So, I guess I'll get to the point here. The point is, is that I would like to see shuffleboard continue if it's a big sport here. We did a survey. Um, I'm not sure how many people were a part of that survey, but, and they, and a lot of people said they wanted swimming pools and all kinds of things. We didn't say that. We just listened to the community, and we put our heads together and said, well, maybe we'll put a pool, maybe we'll put a community center, and et cetera, right? So, I wanted to make that clear. So, if we were to move that small building to another place, whether it be Valentine Park, or Mill Lake, or wherever it may be, and it still had its historical, um, value, if we put it back together, number one, how much is it gonna cost? Because materials are expensive right now, and who's gonna pay for it? The citizens of Orange City, right? So, think about that. So, is it gonna cost more to redo the building? Or take the shuffleboard courts over to another location, or keep it? That's what we're talking about, right? This neighborhood here, this is my district here, and I believe that, yeah, we don't have any parks. We have Oak Park, and we have the shuffleboard court. But, there's not enough room here. If we get the shuffleboard court going right here where it should be for the history, where is everybody gonna park? It's gonna grow, it's gonna blow up, because it's a new thing for us. It's an old-new thing. I shouldn't say it's a new thing, but it would be brought back to life. It could be very successful, like they said. Where does everybody park? Because then we're in a worse problem than we're in now, right? So, the solution is, in my eyes, is we need parking, but we need to save some of the history. If we move the shuffleboard court, it takes away from the original history of the shuffleboard court, right? But it still keeps the sport and the memory of what happened in eighteen hundreds or the nineteen hundreds, whatever it was. So, that's where I see a compromise. We talked about doing pickleball, or bocce ball, or whatever over there. So, maybe this is a solution where we make a compromise with them, and maybe we move the one little building. Is that, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
You gonna cry?
Oh, my nose is rotten.
I want everyone to be heard. I wanna hear it from everyone, sorry.
I'm in agree, uh, agreement with Kelly. Save the building, the little small part. Relocate it. We can use it for a museum. We could use it for a lot of different things. We still have our history there. Move the building, and let's move forward.
If you move the building, you still have to rehab it also. So, you have the cost of the building, the cost of the property, and rehab the whole campus.
Yeah, I understand that part.
It will not be a cheap, uh, deal.
I understand that part of it. But is it worth, people believe history is worth something.
Yeah, oh, I do, too. Trust me, it's, uh, our decision. Mr. Capella.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, I'd like to mention a couple of things where my thoughts are coming from. Some of you may know this. Uh, my grandmother was on the Historic Preservation Board. I was on the Historic Preservation Board. My wife was on the Historic Preservation Board. My family is from Orange City. So, history does mean a lot. I know you know that. Your family's from here. So, that's, that's the place that I'm coming from, but another perspective that I have to also is the hat of being the current council member. And understanding what the city's function, and how we provide that function to the citizenry in this specific location in the campus that we are currently, uh, having this meeting in. So, it's the current events, and the retaining the past, and preserving what makes Orange City unique. This is not a, um, without costs, um, decision. I do think that if we get rid of the building, we have gotten, gotten rid of something that we'll never get back. And we've done a lot of that over the years, and we're that the less for it. The option three is to postpone the action and consider something else, broadly stated. And that something else is moving forward with some historical aspect intact. I don't, another point of, Doug, for folks to understand my thought process. For the last eleven years, I've been in parks and recreation for an additional city in this area. So, I understand utilization of parks and bringing the community together in such a manner. I respect that. I think that this community, um, should drive the purpose of those things, and shuffleboard has waned in this community. Could it be revitalized? Perhaps. Should it be? To be determined. I mean, today's craze is pickleball, or something else. We're in this, so there's the pickle. Option three, postpone the action, consider something else. In my magic wand, the building stays there. The courts are removed. The entire building stays there. We sure it up. We get parking. We retain historic value. And we move forward. It's gonna be costly, but if we get rid of it, what have we lost? So, and I, and I don't know how much it costs, and I, and, and moving it is not, I'm not opposed to that concept. Because if that is, in our continued discussion, a way to achieve us, you know, saving a little bit of Orange City, then we should, we should, that should be our goal. But this is a campus that provides services to our community. We need the function of this campus to work. And we're growing, and God bless us for that. We need to utilize this area efficiently and get the most use. So, my option, my opinion is three, postpone the action, consider something else. And I'm not trying to not do something. I'm not trying not to give you an answer, but, again, my, if, if it was my decision alone, which I clearly not. The building stays there, shuffleboard is removed. Does shuffleboard go somewhere else? If the city wants it, then let's have that. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
So, wha, what would you propose that the building would be used for?
I think, thank you. Um, I think the basic use of the building, I think the building should be maintained in a very basic manner. I do not think it should have a kitchen. I do not think, I think it should just be a, um.
Storage?
No. I think it should be utilized, utilized by the community, uh, in a more active way, but I think it should just be, um, much like what this room is. A venue with, you know, I'm using the wrong words, but a, a meeting place. That has some functional restrooms and accessibility, but no kitchen, no, no bells and whistles. But has the facade, and has the, you know, the three cobbled together old buildings, that two parts will be fifty years old, and one part's over a hundred years old. That's, right there, that's Orange City. We need to keep that. Utilization, public space, in a basic way. Not storage.
It's very small, though.
It is. It is. Uh, how many square feet can compare to this room? If all the entire, because honestly, I don't know.
I don't know.
That the building itself, with porches, is like fifteen hundred square feet. So, you take out, and I'm estimating here, your porches and your restrooms. And I would say you've got the original four hundred square feet, and probably three hundred on each side, or maybe, maybe a thousand. Now, some of that is uncommenced storage, you know, and not used. But, you know, I, I wanna say probably within, uh, something like, about nine hundred, two thousand square feet. What do you think, Mr. Idell, considering that you're?
Well, what's the cost factor gonna be to do that, and not know what we're gonna do with it?
We don't know.
I think that is, is, ma'am.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I, I think that is kind of indicative of the, um, disagreements that you saw in between Mr. Idell and Mr. Farino. And I believe if you're going to make any improvements to that building, you need to bring in an unbiased design professional that tells us what we need to do to get that building in a state that it can be utilized by the public that needs handicapped accessibility for the meeting space and the restrooms. And I don't know, you know, how much it will cost, but I think that, you know, you could ask me to go out and get some bids on that and to bring it back to you. I don't think it's going to be cheap to get that, that plan on doing that. But I think it needs to be done by, um, someone other than, uh, no offense, Mr. Peters, our, our city engineer. He's not a builder, builder, um, of that, of that kind. And I don't really want to rely on citizens to do that work either. Mr. Idell, uh, furnished me with his re, a pictorial resume. I asked Jeremy, I don't know if Jeremy's there.
He's there, yeah.
To, to call. We checked his references for roofing, and, and that was, that was all. So, oh, Bill tells me it's one thousand three hundred and forty square feet.
Thank you. Bill's not smart enough to tell her that. I was handed that yesterday.
Somebody over there told me that, and that includes the restrooms and, and everything, so.
But Bill would.
I may not have been too far off, so.
Bill would add that on page two of your agenda package for this particular item, I would remind the council that right now, in your budget for the fiscal, for the financial impacts, you have budgeted for this fiscal year a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for two things. It's the demolition of the shuffleboard complex, and fifty thousand dollars for the, the parking lot design. So, that's what's available, um, for purposes of consideration, against which you then will get a number, um, based upon what your city manager has indicated. So, uh, whether or not that number is going to be, uh, higher, is anyone's guess. I think we all could guess that it will be higher. The question is, what is gonna be the delta?
It, it may be. I, and I would, I would fully expect it to be. So, you know, we had not budgeted for parking lot construction. You know, some people fault the way we do our planning around here, but first we budget for the, the planning and the design, then we budget for the construction. So, you know, it's hard to budget for what you're building when you don't know what it is. So, I, I would recommend we go forth, get real estimates on what we need to do to bring it into a good place, if that's where you wanted to go.
So, how's that?
And we've got money in the contingency fund for that.
It's gonna be a lot more than that.
Well, not, not doing the, the cost estimating. Then we can come forward, and you can consider then what you want to invest into the building, once you know how much it's going to be. So, that, you know, and we have, um, a, a robust building fund. Of course, it's pegged for other items, um, that we identified. And we have a robust general fund that, um, you know, we're in the process of finishing up, uh, a budget, uh, plan to provide to you, um, in March. I'm not sure which meeting. I'm hoping the first one. But our, our fund balance is, we're, we're very solvent. Uh, I think probably to the point where you could afford to spend some money on this if you wanted to.
So, let me ask you this. What will that do to our parking plans? Will, will that adversely affect how many spaces that we're gonna have?
So, so.
We keep the building, you mean? We keep the building at its current location.
So, so first, as I mentioned, we have only done a sketch plan on the parking lot that we wanted to design. And that sketch plan, um, was primarily.
And that sketch plan, um, was primarily to address the parking issues at Wavea Hall and to provide some additional spaces by reorienting the entire way the parking flowed around Wavea Hall. It would flatten out the area directly in front of Wavea Hall and allow for, I'm gonna bircher it, cause I've read more than I've said aloud, kinda like a port coch, a coch port.
Portico?
Something like that, but without the overhang. But you would be able to pull up close to the front door, drop people off and, and, and then go down a loop. And so, there would be more aisles in the parking lot. The, um, I know, I think I brought a copy of that sketch plan. I think it took it from, it added some spaces to it. And we would cut those spaces by retaining the, the green building. Um, the old shuffleboard clubhouse. How many, I don't know. I wanna say probably twelve to fifteen. So that you would only, um, probably gain a net increase in parking of about twenty, which is better than where we are now. So, you know, we could, um, certainly take a look at that, come up with some sketches. Here it is. So our existing paved parking spaces at Wavea Hall, which includes, uh, you know, the city hall complex, is, um, we currently have forty-six. We were proposing to go to seventy-three. So, it, it reduces it, um, pretty, pretty significantly, but I would need to ask someone to do a redesign.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Um, the Wa- uh, Wavea Hall was deeded in respect that it was for seniors. And so if we take the seniors out of there, we have to rebuild, right?
No.
No?
No, well, Wavea Hall, I don't think we would ever, the hundred thousand dollars would be too much to build a building. It was not deeded to us.
Okay, thank you.
So, the BIA deeded us the land because we didn't own enough
Right.
in nineteen seventy-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Or seventy-nine.
Seventy-eight. Nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-eight.
So in nineteen ninety-eight, it was reported.
I guess my point is, the hundred thousand dollars was to put seniors in, right? So, if we were to move it, would we have to still follow that rule?
I, I think if you were going to relocate Wavea Hall, you would need to, you would be investing far more than a hundred thousand dollars. The hundred thousand dollars was part of what was used to build Wavea Hall. I've not done a forensic audit on it, but I believe additional money were also devoted to construction of that building. So if you were going to, um, put Wavea Hall to another use, it, I believe, or at least today, I don't know what'll happen in twenty years, maybe we'll get younger. But if, if the plan continues, what we're projecting is Wavea Hall's too small for our growing senior population.
Correct.
So if you were going to do anything, you'd either need to add on to that building and the site is constrained, or you need to build a new building. One of the problems with that building is it doesn't have a kitchen. So, uh, we have, the senior center has brought in, um, warming ovens to keep all of the meals. It's like a catering, that kind of project. It doesn't have a kitchen.
I guess what I was asking was because if you were, if the seniors are, are outgrowing the building, they're taking a lot of the parking up right now, and that's a problem for us, right? Um, and so I was thinking, well, if, in, in the plan somewhere it said that if we were to possibly re- put them in a different place and move the employees in that building, then obviously there wouldn't be as many cars in that parking lot, which would free up some spots, maybe?
Well, we're, well, and I, I disagree with, um, Mr. Idell's, um, numbers. Uh, because what our plans are, it costs the greatest shopping up here, our people are low. So even though the police department did empty the, um, part of city hall, who's over to the police department, then part of, um, engineering.
Who's city hall?
The city hall. In fact, that would be a pretty significant part. The police are on, you know, there's three shifts with the police. There's sixteen sworn officers. Well, there's twenty-seven sworn officers. There's sixteen that we use to work the A, B, C, D shifts and that bracket that we've always got.
There's about twenty, about twenty.
Twenty. Um, those officers have take-home privileges with their cars, so...
So we're still in a deficit, even when you flip things around?
Their cars are not in addition to employees' cars. And they're there over twenty-four steps, not all at one time. So, you know, the numbers are, you know, a parking analysis is a difficult thing to do. I'm not trying to be critical of you, but there's a lot of nuances in it. When you look at what I, the pe- the number of employees I've got parking out there now, I can tell you that based on our walking around and counting, including our volunteers, on our largest shift, we use sixty-eight spaces.
Well, I, I'm in favor of option three also, just because I think we need to get, we need to get some more, uh, prices and options of things, if that's where we're looking as a council. And, um, and it's really hard to make a decision when we don't know how much things cost.
And I, I agree, uh, option three may be a way to go.
What I'm afraid of is that we're gonna get kicking this can too far down the road and it's just gonna come back to the same thing all over. That's why I said, you know, go with option two, demolition, then, uh, have a caveat that it's either moved or I guess we could add that something gets done with it within a certain time period. So it doesn't end up being up here again next year, whatever.
Uh, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate what you, the point that I believe I heard you say is that this is something that we'd like to, to overcome. We'd like to get to a, some, a final understanding and not be a year from now having this rigorous discussion that we've had this evening, which is, um, like, yes. But I, I think there's still some potential to retain something, and we're not quite sure of how many spaces we mainly want to, or what the costs are. And I'm not interested in kicking a hand out of it. So I know that that's just one more thing we have to put on our staff to, to provide work products so we can make the decisions about. Um, but that's, at this point, um, option three and, um, cause I know that, if I understood correctly in presentation, that a lot of, we're kinda like, this is stopping something else from happening, something, something else from happening, and something, something else from happening. So, let's make this happen so we can unleash all the other potential.
I'd like to make a motion.
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion to accept option three.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, any further discussion? All right.
So, so can I make sure I understand option three? Because option three is postpone action and consider something else.
Right.
There's options.
Now, I, so I, this is very important. There's something else is how much it will cost to preserve the building in location.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, in location. Um, and how much it will, what you will get if we redesign the parking lot to provide for, um, that. So, may I have permission to tap into the city's contingency fund for this? Or to use the parking lot design money for this, knowing that we can come back later and reappropriate?
Are we still giving her the shuffleboard class, option three?
I, I want to make sure I, you know, work with a professional who can do some important design and give us, and, you know, a good estimate of what is needed to bring the building into a public facing, publicly used building, right? Okay, not a sketch.
Is that clear, Bill, or do we need to make a new motion for that?
Motion's fine, and, uh, but I, but, but I, I wanna make sure that your city manager is satisfied with the direction that you are giving her this evening. And for the record, what I'm hearing is that you are, uh, not choosing option two, you're choosing option three, but that you are authorizing city manager to, to retain the necessary services to do two things. Uh, one is, is to reevaluate the impact on the parking of, of keeping the building. And two, to find out what, uh, to hire the services to, to, to get an idea, uh, to bring back to the council what it's gonna cost, um, for the taxpayers to, uh, to keep that building and to make it a public space. Did I say that right?
Yes, but I also need some funds to take the, 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 um, parking lot design from sketch to a more refined concept.
So you're...
And provide for, for, you know, this was a in-house sketch. I need to do it a little more formally. I need some engineering funds.
So your city manager's asking for, for authority to move forward with that task as well?
Yes.
So that would be included in, in the motion. That's part of option three, the motion to approve option three incorporates those, those expenditures and that authorization to your city manager.
So moved.
If, if I may, just, just for Claire, and I, and every day of that is a, is a, a process, I'm, but but there was some mention of, uh, something else, was moving the building. And I'm not, is, is this an opportunity to get costs on that? I don't even know, we have a place to put it.
It would be nice to have that option to hear.
It's a good option, we could buy, uh, in our next, when, when they come back with this, if, if we don't agree with the cost of, of doing everything, then that could be another option.
But wouldn't we wanna know that now?
It's evaluated at that time, cause I will tell you that moving the building is going to be in part dependent upon where you move it. And then the cost from moving it half a block is going to be substantially different than carting it down US seventeen ninety-two with a, you know, a huge entourage.
And, and, yeah, I only bring that up because I wanna be efficient in this. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it where we don't get something, like a, a work product.
Right, it keeps it open, I, I think, that's what I'm, that's open-ended.
Yeah.
So you see, you got something?
Yeah, are we talking about moving the whole building or just that one portion of it?
I wasn't that, that with TBS. We can figure that out later.
But would the cost be different in moving the whole building than just moving that little part of it?
Well...
Well, we, we don't know.
Yeah, and this...
May I, may I suggest that, that you either, um, this evening, either direct the city manager or not to investigate the opportu-
Yes. Sorry, Dale.
It may, may take me a year to come up with that.
But no, I think what I'm hearing is basically preserve it in its place and then come up with a parking plan and bring that back.
Depending on the cost.
Yeah, and if that's, if it comes back and we don't agree with that, then, then we're back to Claire wants it.
And we're talking about the whole building and not just the, the small part? Cause our building inspector said that the other parts were not, not, okay.
Okay. So we got a motion, we got a second? Nail it, any further discussions before we move on? No, Paul.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark?
Yes.
Councilmember Darn?
Yes.
Councilmember Capello?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and the motion passes. Okay, let's move on to, is everybody doing okay? You need a break, it's, uh, ten o'clock. Oh, a ten-minute recess?
Yes.
All right, ten minutes. Come back at ten, ten.
Mayor, we're gonna be coming back to, uh, item of five A, five A, ordinance's first reading. Bottom page one of your gen-
All right, we'll get back started on five A ordinances, first reading. Five A ordinance number six seven five, Mr. Rice.
Mr. Mayor, this is council. This is an ordinance for the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium regarding applications for affordable housing projects authorized under the Live Local Act in subsection seven of section one sixty-six zero four one five one Florida statutes for properties located within Orange Orange City commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoning classifications, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict or with providing for severability and for an effective date. First reading of a legislative matter, Mr. Mayor.
Please will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members and respected members of the public, Joe Ruiz, Deputy Development Services Director, City of Orange City. So today before you, as has been written to the record, ordinance number six seventy-five, first hearing. I'm going to try to keep it brief, just because I know we all are educated on this topic. Obviously, we've had a long night. And really, in reality, we're just staying the course of the January ninth, twenty twenty-four resolution number three oh four dash twenty-four that was approved by the city council in regards to establishing the city's intent to establish this six-month temporary moratorium in in response for as far as the requirements and what staff is noting in regards to the Live Local Act. So just a quick recap of Florida statutes twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, known as the Live Local Act, if made effective into law, state law, on July first, twenty twenty-three, has rocked many municipalities. From a planning perspective, many planning principles have been challenged. And, you know, as as a planner, how do we how do we approach this? And as a planning department, how do we move our city forward considering the preemptions that have been brought forth by the state? And so at the heart of this is qualified developments for affordable housing projects that can be located in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoning districts, which preempt us, as Dale was talking earlier about preemptions, as far as using the the zoning restrictions for height, use, density, and also our beloved public hearing process, which is at the heart of of planning. Just to get into affordability, I know you all have seen this, and essentially what I did was extracted the information that Becky provided in the January ninth memo and just kind of just put it on a slide and a spreadsheet. I don't want to belabor the point too much, but as far as what is affordability, based on the Live Local Act, forty percent of the units must be affordable, based on that definition for a thirty-year period. I.e., the city has been approached in a pre-application meeting for a property off of Rhode Island and VMP, where they were talking in surplus of six hundred units, almost seven hundred units. We're looking at two hundred and eighty approximate quote-unquote affordable units. That affordability is adopted by the state. They they take the number that is provided by the the Housing and Urban Development Department of of the federal government. They take that, they adopt that into their, for example, ship program, which is what is funding a lot of where the state's initiative for live locals coming from on their end. And then they they take that statistical area, which is what we're part of. We're part of a metropolitan assistive statistical area, which is called Deltona Daytona Beach, Ormond Beach area. And so when we look at these numbers, for example, the average wage that is that was determined by the MSA or or statistical area is forty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-four, right? When we look at the scales of rent scales, essentially rent can be no more than thirty percent of the AMI or average median income. It includes taxes, insurance, and utilities. However, for renters, taxes and insurance typically doesn't come into play. However, the rent and utilities do. So when we look at that one-point-two factor for moderate, qualified, needed homes, per se, that bumps the AMI to fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. And then when you look at that thirty percent, that puts the moderate income or as far as the rent values at one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Some may argue, is that even affordable, right? And we look at market rate. Market rate is not too far off from that, maybe a couple hundred more. So in reality, the requirements of the state are, it's got to be affordable for thirty years, right? Staff does not have a housing authority, or the city doesn't have a housing authority or a housing department. So how do we approach these items? How do we enforce that the application and that the development is going to have that thirty-year requirement? And so it's going to require staff time to establish some of the requirements, enforcement mechanisms. Do we do de-distrctions? Do we do agreement templates like like we we do sometimes with the DAs? However, there's no public hearing. How do we monitor and report these requirements on a yearly basis perhaps? And where is that annual funding source to administer the program comes from, right? A lot of the burden based on the Live Local Act is the local municipality has to foot that bill, right? And there's tax incentives that the developers are given. So that's one of the aspects, and you're going to see a footnote on each of these slides that essentially establish the reason why we're we're moving forward and and requesting you all approve a temporary moratorium because of the Live Local Act. Zoning preemptions, right? So I'm going to keep it short. I'm going to give you the short and tall, right? No pun intended, as far as the preemptions. Height standards. The Live Local Act states that buildings can be as tall as what is allowed within a one-mile radius. So essentially, it says if a zoning district allows one hundred and fifty feet within that one-mile radius, then that building that is in a qualified development under the the Live Local Act can also be one hundred and fifty feet tall, per se. Obviously, in our in our codes, we don't have that height essentially, but, you know, there's a lot of questions as to do the PUD zonings that allow these apply. What, you know, what what do we look at and how do we how do we administer these requirements? The density requirements. Our code currently establishes the most dense area, which is the mixed-use activity center area, namely at the corner of Kentucky and four seventy-two, which allows forty dwelling units per acre. And so what the Live Local Act says is that you have to apply the most dense that dense residential requirements that your city has. So what we're going to go into is conditional uses in commercial areas. You typically allow twelve dwelling units per acre. Well, the Live Local Act now has told us we'd have to apply forty dwelling units per acre. As far as the applicable zoning districts that Live Local would would kind of encroach on, we're looking at commercial, industrial, and our mixed-use areas. We have a robust mixed-use, both zoning designations as well as future land use designations, which are many of our undeveloped lands in our city. So how do we balance that? How do we how do we how do we, you know, make sure that we're practicing sound planning practices and growth management within our city? You know, and and with with this Live Local Act. Currently excluded from the preemptions, included but not limited to, which is kind of this this the saving grace of planning, environmental regulations, transportation, utility concurrency, maximum floor area ratio, open space, lock coverage setbacks, and landscaping, right? Others to be mentioned as well. You may ask, why have I highlighted maximum floor area ratio? Part of it is there is currently a glitch bill that the state is working on. Typically, when you see glitch bills, they're fixing problems or kind of responding to the local municipalities' response to this. However, what we're looking at really right now in the glitch bill is another preemption, which would remove the application of floor area ratios. So the floor area ratio essentially tells you the maximum square footage you can build on a building on a specific lot, based on the standards. Well, there, no, it does not help it at all from a planning from a planning aspect and and approach. Just to make a note, the office transitional, which is more of a historic transitional area, the commercial recreational area, which is also our zoning districts, which are also a little more recreational, do not apply to the zoning preemptions. And then the city has also taken the stance, as well as other municipalities, that PUDs are a a contract between the landowner, developer, and the city, so therefore they would not apply to these PUD zoning districts. So just kind of get into the the meat of it, and essentially, the next six months after the the ordinance is adopted, where staff's headed in in the direction as, you know, job security, essentially, we have a lot of work to do. And and Becky and I and the staff will be working closely to, especially with the city manager, with the planning commission, and you all, to see how we move forward with creating standards that make sense, you know, in in reference to reviewing live local projects. So part of those challenges is currently, commercial districts allow up to twelve dwelling units per acre via conditional use. Conditional uses require public hearing. With the Live Local Act, it says if it's commercial, industrial, mixed-use, no public hearing is required. It can be done administratively. It has to be done administratively. Industrial districts do not allow residential uses due to incompatibility. Typically, in your normal review and in our normal analysis, a rezoning would be required, whether it be to PUD. A lot of the mixed-use areas or all of our mixed-use areas require a planned unit development for the site being developed. That is to ensure that the use is compatible with the surrounding areas. I.e., when we were looking at the pre-app for that site right next to the landfill, it is it is a concern due to fumes, due to the nature of the use. How do we make that compatible, right? We're we're forced to essentially accept, based on the Live Local Act, if someone were to pursue that. Mixed-use districts require PUD rezoning for to review for land use compatibility and comp plan consistency. With the administrative preemption, that's out the door essentially. The mixed-use and mixed-use activity center, future land use designations provide minimum, maximum land use percentages and density, intensity standards. So if you've, as you've perused through the future land use element of our comprehensive plan, there's two tables. There's the mixed-use activity center table, and there's also the mixed-use the mixed-use typical or general areas of future land use areas. They have a minimum, maximum for percentages of development of the types of uses. And with the Live Local Act, essentially, it says, you know, they can do affordable housing throughout. How do we cap that? How do we balance our city's resources? Just to kind of pull some numbers to to make some sense out of some things. If a seven-hundred-unit development were to come in for multifamily, per Bieber numbers, you're usually looking at a two-point-six-one factor per per unit. That's about eighteen hundred new residents in our city that that would be coming through. Essentially, Councilmember Marx was was talking about our population at fourteen thousand. That's almost ten percent, if not more, right, of 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 what we have now currently. So how do we manage those concurrency items, public safety, and and things like that? As mentioned, the public hearings for conditional uses of PUDs allow proper implementation for conditions to ensure compatible development standards and surrounding uses. These developments can cause substantial population increase, as mentioned. And then one of the biggest questions that we have that's vague within the act is what is what is a mixed-use residential development? The Live Local Act says if a municipality has less than twenty percent of industrial and commercial designated lands in their city, then every development that comes in under Live Local has to be mixed-use residential development. However, it does not define what makes use residential development. What it gives is you have to have forty percent of the units at quote-unquote affordable, and essentially, the the rest, I guess, is the left-up term interpretation, which at the footnote of this of this slide is essentially, city must have time to address potential impacts to infrastructure, emergency and public services, public safety, aesthetics, public welfare, and public facilities, as well as establish rules for administrative review and approval of qualified developments to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of Orange City residents. So we're challenged with coming up with ways to address these the vagueness or ambiguity that's within the Live Local Act. Depending on on what the zoning is, if 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 it's a historic contributing structure, but it's a CG one, you know, like, for example, the Dollar General, I mean, I know it's not, but I'm just giving an example of it's within the the district. Quite possibly, there's nothing really that addresses, you know, it it would really be in an up for interpretation, I guess, for the, you know, our city attorney and 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 counsel to say, does it conflict, does do statutes conflict at that point? Because it does not give guidance for, which is a very good point, for for those historic buildings. So essentially, with that quick summary, like I said, to try to try to keep it brief. On February seventh, the planning commission found ordinance number six seventy-five consistent with the comp plan and forwarded the ordinance to city council with recommendation approval. And today, staff recommends the city council approve the ordinance at first hearing. And forward to March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, city council meeting for adoption at second and final hearing. Thank you. Any questions?
Um, yeah, I think when they put this bill together, they didn't really think about all of these things. So I'm glad that this has been brought up, and it'll slow down some development, not necessarily stop it, but and maybe give them time to relook at what they set in place. Because what was it, local voices or lo- local choices or what's what's the league say, you know? We don't have a local voice anymore. We don't have it. We don't have the choice or the voice, right?
Let me step in. The purpose of this is, I'm going to be very blunt, the purpose of this is not to hopefully allow the legislature to 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 back away from what what Mr. Ruiz has been indicating. The purpose of the six months is to allow the city staff to take a hard look at our building codes and our and our codes to see what we what we have or what we need so that we can implement these these preemptions a little bit better to try to protect the citizens and the taxpayers for the consequences of this type of unregulated growth. That's the purpose of the six months. And that's what this record is reflecting, is all of the time that that this is a reasonable period of time to allow the city staff to try to 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 interpret all of these ambiguities and problems that are being created by this legislation.
We also need to develop a set of rules for how we're going to enforce the fact that it needs to be actual affordable housing for thirty years. The statutes do not provide any enforcement mechanism. The owner of the building is just granted this tax-free status for thirty years. We need to develop a set of rules of how we can get onto their property, monitor their books, and give them notice and a chance to fix it, and and then cut them off from that if they're not actually providing affordable housing. This is a huge potential impact to the city's pocketbook. As as Mr. Ruiz noted, you could increase your population by ten percent. We need ten percent more policemen, more firemen, more parks, more shuffleboard courts, you know.
I am for it, right?
No money, no money.
This is the worst kind of legislation. It's not just preemption. It's unfunded mandates.
That's right.
You know, we are basically going to be subsidizing developers on the backs of these.
It's disgusting.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone from the public who'd like to speak? On this? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council. Any further questions for Joe? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Prive ordinance number six seven five at first reading and schedule second and final reading for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Yes.
Yes.
House member Stafford?
Yes.
House member Graham?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and ordinance number six seven five passes. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to item number six, public hearing slash ordinances, second reading and final reading. We have none at this time. Item seven, resolutions, we have none at this time. So we go back into eight B, exterior renovation of city hall, AKA town hall, John Peters.
John Peters, Engineering Services Director. Oh, okay, it's up there. Before I get started, this is a photo that I found. This is supposedly from the nineteen forties. What's interesting about this is the gutters and the downspouts were white at the time. It appeared to be steel, painted steel gutters. I just want to point this out because this is a historic reference. You'll notice that the basement windows are all in place at that time, but I thought it was a a good reference point. Now, how do I do this? Well, I'm going to talk about the exterior repair to eliminate water intrusion. And I think it's very important to remember what the purpose of this. The purpose of this project is to provide a safe environment for the public and city employees from the impact of water intrusion into the building. The original goal was to do interior renovations to repair the damages that have been caused by water over the years. But it is imperative that we fix the exterior problems so that we don't spend the money on interior work only to have it be undone by more water intrusion. Since we met with you all back in November, staff has had a number of meetings, and we have also met with Mr. Adele at least twice on this, and I think we have come to terms on this project. The project components is the cupola and the weather vane, flashing, the slate roof. We have three flat roofs, gutters and downspouts, and brick and mortar. And I'm going to go through each one separately. The cupola and the weather vane. Inside of the cupola is a hatch that goes down, actually, you go from the finance department up into the cupola area. This hatch has shown signs of having water intrusion. So we're planning to replace the existing hatch with a watertight seal on it and locking mechanism to keep that sealed tight, and then install new flooring to provide positive drainage away from the hatch. Right now, it's flat. The water tends to pond around the hatch, which just exacerbates the problem. The cupola exterior needs to be stripped of the paint, install flashing in that area, and then repaint. Also, we are proposing to install a neat new TPO membrane. It is a white membrane that you use on flat roofs. And what this does is it provides a level of protection against water getting into the the flat area. And then on the weather vane, surprisingly, the existing weather vane is a a galvanized steel pipe, but it goes into a copper roof. Whenever you have galvanized and copper, you're going to have corrosion. And that corrosion has created a situation where the water gets in that small area around the weather vane, and the weather vane doesn't work. So what we're proposing is to replace the vane post with a copper pipe, and then inside of the cupola have a copper seat where that pipe was set on. And that way, and then we'll have a little cap on it to keep the water tied to the pipe that keeps the water from going down into the the cupola roof. And then we would fix or replace the weather vane. And this is an area where we will have more discussions. Right now, the weather vane doesn't have anything on top of it. You know, Mr. Adele jokingly said that we could put a crow up there. I said we could put a manatee up there. But, you know, something can be done to have it be something that we're proud of looking at. Next, it's the flashing. When you have roofing, whether it's asphalt, slate, any type of roofing, the area where the roof meets a vertical wall is an area where water can penetrate. So what you wanted to do is have flashing that's along the wall and then goes underneath the roofing material. But you also want to have about four to six inches of flashing above that material so it doesn't have an opportunity to, what I call, wick into the the brick area. So and then the other thing is, we had hired a firm that has a Florida office. They specialize in historic buildings to do an evaluation. The ridge cap on the top of the building is butt joint slate, which is not the way it's normally done. They're normally, just like you do slate, you overlap them. But the other thing that you can do is install a copper ridge cap on the top. It lays on top of the slate. It's attached to where the water goes off and it's shut down, and it doesn't have an opportunity to get down into the roof material. And then that ridge vent has an inplate on them where the water can't get in through the sides. So it creates a much more watertight situation on top of the roof. And then, if needed, based on field inspection, we would install new perimeter flashing around the perimeter of the cupola. The only reason that I'm bringing this up is when we went into the attic, we saw light coming in right next to the cupola. And that's usually an indication that you got somewhere where water has an opportunity to come in. We just need to evaluate it closer to determine, you know, what the source of that light is. Then on the slate roof, we would replace missing or damaged slates. Based on Mr. Adele's viewing and our viewing, we're assuming about twenty slates are involved in terms of the existing roof. Then we move and replace slate displays to install new cupola perimeter flashing if needed. And then all of this work on the slate roof will be following the National Slate Association standards. That's pretty much the bible when it comes to slate roofs. Then we have three flat roofs, one on the east, one on the west, and one in the back. Just to put in perspective for you, the problem we're dealing with, the the roof on the east side, we actually had the ceiling collapse in the women's restroom. We had to do a temporary repair on the roof, but, you know, that just exemplifies the problem that we have with water intrusion. So what we're proposing is to rebuild all three roofs with a TPO roof membrane. This is white. It doesn't absorb heat. It's flat. We would provide adequate flashing and insulation slope to ensure positive drainage. What that means is we take the rigid insulation and it's trimmed to create a slope. Because each of those flat roofs have two scuppers where the water drains, and we have to get the water to go toward those scuppers. So what you do is you trim up the insulation to create that positive drainage. You had to ask me. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's some something polyvinyl, something. Then increase the size of the existing roof scupper by a minimum of fifty percent to eliminate roof pounding. The problem we have right now is we have fairly small scuppers. And for the water to go, it's kind of like putting water into a when you forgot the word. Yeah, when you put it in a funnel, the water has to build up in order to get out. Well, if you have too small of a scupper, the water has to build up, which means you've got water standing on the roof. That's the last thing we want. So what we want to do is increase the size of the scupper so that the water can get out more efficiently and not pond on the the roof itself. The gutters and downspouts, this is the longest part of this whole presentation. What was proposed, one of the things that we found is that the big source of the water coming in is behind the gutters. There's no backer board or facial board. It's just the ends of the rafters and an opening. So over the years, what has, we believe has happened is when the gutters get full, now they try to go out the front, but sometimes they're going to go out the back. And when they go out the back, they're going into the wall cavity. And then on top of that, where the pediment roof is on the porch, and it turns back along the roof, you got that valley that comes there. And so you have a very large amount of water right in that corner, trying to go both ways, but ultimately has to go one. So that creates a pounding situation which wants to come into building. Coincidentally, the worst problem we have with the wall deteriorating is when you go in the front door and you go to the left, there's a curtain. You pull that curtain back, you'll see what looks awful. That is exactly where that corner of the gutter is, because it's the highest volume of water, the gutter can't handle it. And without the the facial board, the water comes back into the building and into the wall cavity. So what we're proposing to do is to put a one-by-six backer board, but flush. So what we're proposing to do is to put a one-by-six backboard, but flush with the end of the rafter. That way, we create a fascia. Then we would install flashing over that fascia board tied in under the slate shingles. And what that will do, if the water coming off, it's going to be directed into the gutter. But if it tries to come back out, there's going to be a fascia board and flashing to keep the water from going back into the building and it won't drain down. So then we're looking at reinstalling the existing or install new six N K type gutters with gutter guards. Now, this is like leash guards. We're hopeful that if we stay with the copper, that the gutter can come down and be reused. That would be ideal. It may be that we can. But there was discussion about whether staying with the copper or going with the white aluminum. As the front picture showed and pictures from the sixties, they were white gutters in the past. So, you know, white gutters may be more historically accurate. Now, the last time we did the work, we chose to go with copper. We may want to stay that way. I happen to think it's beautiful, but that's a decision we need to make. And then, as I indicated before, we have a lot of water in the gutters that needs to get out. Right now, we have three-by-four corrugated box downspout. I propose enlarging to four-by-five. That way, we get the water out of the gutters more efficiently. Once again, copper or white aluminum. Going around the building, there's a decorative band. And if you look out there, and you look at the front page on the end of the building, there's a gooseneck. When the downspout goes, and it goes around the decorative band and down, that gooseneck gives the opportunity for leaves and twigs and sticks to get stuck in there, and it impacts the ability of the water to get out. So we would propose either cutting the band to allow it to go straight through, well, cutting the band, allow it to take away the gooseneck, I'm sorry. Then we would attempt to salvage the decorative conductors. If you go back, on the front page, there's a little decorative box right at the top of the downspout. That helps the water go from the gutters into the downspout more efficiently. So we believe that it can be saved, and we would use them. And then it had been suggested that we might consider replacing the gutters with eight- or nine-inch half-round gutters and round downspouts. Interestingly, because this has never been used on the building, that we can tell, it would probably have to go back to the Historic Preservation Board for approval. And then, at the bottom of the downspouts, we would install downspout cleanhouse. These are, they're a little plate on the inside with opening. When the leaves come down and they start piling up, it will open the trapdoor and go out onto the ground rather than going into the underground system and clogging it up. And then lastly, we would install French drains to the existing stormwater system to efficiently get the water away from the building. Last part is brick and mortar. And many of the windows and doors, what we found is, the area next to the window and door framing, a gap. There was one that I was able to put my little finger in quite a way. That's significant. That allows the water to get back into that cavity. The other thing is, because of the nature of the cavities, you want weep holes in brick to allow water that goes in the cavity, like above the window, to be able to get out. So what we're proposing is that we would install new mortar or high-performance caulking around the windows and doors to take care of those openings. And then we would install new weep holes to allow water that's in the cavity, for whatever reason, it could even be condensation, to get out. All right, recommendations. Staff recommended the city council approve the proposed scope of services upon selection of preferred gutters and downspout, K-type versus half-round, and copper versus aluminum. Let me point out, even copper can be painted white. So if we were able to use the existing copper, we can still paint them white, if that's the color you all want to go with. And then staff will issue a request for qualifications that will include qualifications in historic building repairs and unit price bid. A selection committee will forward recommendations to city council for award of the contract to do the exterior work. Any questions?
Does copper last longer than aluminum?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I'm kind of in favor of the copper myself. That's what's there, it saves money. Would you have to replace it? How do you rest your opinion about that? Would then I'm here to do the copper?
As long as it gets painted white and looks original, you know, it's not, it doesn't take away from the integrity of the building, right?
Anyone from the public want to speak to this?
I don't think it's necessary to do the presentation. I have to get to the microphone. Thank you, sir. Tom Idell, 339 East University Avenue is where I used to live. It's, I'm in the city. We've put, we've put a lot of this together, and we've, we've come to a decision, but what, what I'd like to just discuss real quick is that the original report that you had and the original recommendations to you were to remove the slate roof and replace it. And I'm not basing it, this is not the city's issue, that we, we had a report given to us, and the report that was given to us didn't match what's in the building. Okay? And the slate roof, because we, because we've decided to repair it, we've taken two hundred and, or two hundred thousand dollars off the bill, which originally was four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and anywhere from four hundred and sixty-two to six hundred thousand is where we were presenting. The bell tower mechanical components, which was a little hole where the cable goes through, there was eight thousand, or eight hundred dollars awarded for that. That wasn't, that isn't necessary. The cupola flashing, I've been in the attic, I know it's a question with daylight, but with a slate roof, you always see daylight. You shut the lights out, the copper sends a reflection of the copper into the building. It's, it's common. So I don't think we're going to have to spend the forty-four thousand dollars to reflash the cupola. The masonry walls, we were originally going to clean effervescence and seal it with a sealer. It was restored eighteen years ago. Every joint was ripped out and redone. So that's sixty-six thousand dollars that's been removed from this budget. The windows, we're going to, we'll leave that. Gable vents, eight thousand eight hundred dollars to deal with the gable vents that have been there for ninety-seven years and have no indication of any leakage inside. And the, the new four-phase clock, we've decided to hold off on this, on this report. It was a, had a cost of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to replace the four clocks and put in an electric clock. That brought, that rang the total, from four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, we're removing three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from this original quote. Okay? I don't know if I'm qualified or not, but three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in three minutes is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a minute. Thank you.
Us from the MHMS plan.
City Hall Exterior Reservation. This is the first meeting we had that you handed out.
Is, is that the MHMS plan?
This is the first one that came to us that was presented to city council. And again, it's not, it's not, this doesn't have anything to do with the city or anyone in the city. The report that was given to us didn't match. And they, they asked, they said the felt paper was rotted, there isn't felt paper, they said the nails were rotted, they're stainless steel nails. We've saved a lot by doing this, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to work like this. This is, this is what it's all about. Thank you.
All right, that brings me to another question about Mr. Idell's role in doing all this. I've never, in my time up here, seen anyone from a board or the public be so involved. And, you know, I was, I sat here the other day when you had your meeting, and you were saying that you were consultant to the city, doing a work pro bono, which is all fine and dandy. But it's, this project has slowed down quite a bit since you've been involved in it. Okay? And I'm, and my feeling is this, had we, you know, gone with people that are more qualified, it, you know, the project would have been moving on and possibly even done at this point. So. If you'd like to.
The recommendation is to send it out. We haven't had, we haven't had a heavy storm in months. The roof doesn't leak. Can you take it back to the first picture that we put up there, decorating?
All right, Tom, I don't, I don't want to beat all this stuff up. My, my, what I'm getting at is, you're not an architect, you're not an engineer, you're not a general contractor. Okay? And you've been interjecting, and we've listened all along and gone along with it. I, I think you have maybe overstepped your bounds as far as, you know, going into the buildings and talking with staff and things of that nature. And I, I don't think that that's what we need. I think we have our own staff, our own people, and they're the ones that should be working on it.
Okay.
That's, that's my feeling.
Let's move on from this. This is a back and forth thing.
No, you, I'm, listen.
Order.
I'm, I'm just saying that, you know.
I asked to give a recommendation. If you don't want me to give it, I will give it.
Well, personally, I, I would prefer you not to, okay? Because I don't make that clear.
We hired a company that specializes in historic structures and slate roofs. We had a full set of recommendations from them. And I understand the reasoning that they were talking about taking the slate roof off. We're having a healthy disagreement on that subject. But the building officials had told us that once we reached a certain threshold of slate that has to be replaced, we have to replace the whole thing. We don't think we're going to get there. We're hoping we don't. But that's part of the reason we're putting in the qualification aspect of the contract, is so that we get contractors who best work, so that they can include it as part of their proposal, so that we have, you know, multiple people that specialize in this and give us their recommendation.
So you don't want my recommendation? Does anybody else on the board like to hear what I have to say about it after? Did this guy? I'm sorry, I, I'm just, you just said you don't want, personally, don't want to hear it. I don't want the floor. I'm just asking if anybody wants to hear what someone that does it every day wants to, would suggest.
I'm not going to get into this with you right now. I've said what I have to say. You're not qualified. You're not a contractor. You're not an engineer. You're not an architect. So you have, you try to act as if you are, okay? And that's, that's, I've said what I have to say, and I'm done.
So I guess at this point, I'm looking for probably a motion. From what I'm hearing, the motion basically go with the scope of services with a K-type gutter in copper.
So moved.
The motion?
Councilmember Darnes? Councilmember Patelio? Councilmember Stafford? Councilmember Grimm? Councilmember Mark? Mayor Boyer?
All right, item eight C, special event permit, number SPEC dash zero seven dash two three dash three three dash six one, request for name change and temporary banner permit condition, Christine Davis.
Good evening, Councilmember Christine Davis, Assistant City Manager. This one's going to be a relatively short one, as it's a, it's a name change. On request. So the previous application was submitted with the Moose Market. Had a renaming and rebranding, and it's now the Manatee Market. So we're just making that official. I can update the records. Really, no action needs to be taken for that to happen. The next item is, there's a banner request. As depicted in the agenda item, there's current code that limits the number of times and the length of time and then the period in between where an applicant can, can display a banner. At this time, the applicant is requesting that the banner be allowed to stay up throughout the entire time that the special event permit is active, is active. And basically, staff recommends that council may allow the temporary banners extended duration as requested. And we would simply amend the, the letter and the conditions and add a ninth condition that would clarify if this were to be approved.
So to clarify, the banner would stay up all the time?
All the time while the special event permit is active, which would be through, I believe, May twenty-fifth.
And so what is it normally for a banner?
So banners can be displayed per your land development code, no more than fourteen consecutive days at one time. There's a maximum of six times per year with a thirty-day minimum in between each occurrence. And that's what's currently, you know, followed, but you, you have the ability to amend the special event permit as a condition.
So if we let this go through, other people will be saying, well, you let them do it? Let us do it?
That could be. I don't know of any other current special event that has the extended duration that this.
Armors Market does. Well, certainly, we, you could hear, but so-and-so did it at some point in the future, that we hear. Applicant wants to speak.
Well, and being a member of the council, I don't like the public perception that I say that that can create.
Kelly Marks, five seventy Columbus Avenue. Currently, the banner is allowed up for, I think, two or three days a week is what we had in our permit. So basically, it's being put up on Thursday, and it stays up Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then it comes down, and then it goes back up on Thursday. So there's a couple days in between. And because it's a new market, it's hard to build it when they, they, they don't see the sign, they don't know if it's happening. So that's why it was requested to continue it until May twenty-fifth.
I, I do not see in the current rendition letter that we issued on December fifteenth where that was a primary. Activity. I don't know where that came, because this was, I kind of picked this up after the first time.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of it, but it's.
I have it, I have them with me.
Okay. It doesn't say Thursday, Friday, Saturday, because I had to pick. There's so many days in the process, you know, how many, so many days that you can put it up, you said. I think it was how many days? And so it was, okay, if you count the days for that month, or whatever the duration was, that's what it came out to.
That conversation would not happen with me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. But I can look at the previous rendition letter and see, I just know what made it pre, okay, there it is. Because it was part of the agenda item, was I had, I did include the previous conditions, and then we amended them.
No, it's late.
But I just wanted to clarify that I did not see that. That meant to me. As I read, as I read, that was in the land development code, so. It is, and I have both. It is, and I have both.
As the applicant, alls I can say is that I know that's what I was told I could do is Thursday or Thurs- I'm so tired. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and it would come down after the market. And then, so there was a couple of days in between there that you had to take it down. And it just seems kind of ridiculous to take it down for a couple of days and put it back up and take it down and put it up. So. And by the way, um, I should say it in that microphone, but I am going to recuse myself of this voting due to conflict of interest.
Uh, ma'am.
Yes.
Please, thank you. Uh, obviously, this is the first time I've spoken with my staff. If I heard correctly, this is the third time that this has been revisited. And so, ma'am.
Can one, the question is, uh, um, because I, and I can't remember. It was a temporary.
On nine thirteen, it was a temporary. After that, um, period, it was brought back to revisit to see if there were any concerns that needed to be addressed. Um, and if not, then it was extended through May. And then now tonight is the just simple name change.
And to clarify, it's about the market. You're talking about the market. We're talking about the banner, right? And the name change, right?
I was only talking about how many times the market yes.
Right. I mean, just to clarify to Councilman Papello, because he wasn't here.
Uh, sorry. Uh, so I'm just trying to, I'll just be, um, clarified. And in this moment, there seems to be a little bit of, like, information that's missing. Because the interpretation, I'm hearing two different aspects. My inclination is what was agreed in the original is that what was unique. And that is what should be that we continue to go forward on. Um, because previous council decided that that was what was acceptable for the community. And it's operating in that manner, and to let you clarify on what that is, I don't know. Uh, so if it is any different than the original eight conditions, I would say we don't do that. I recognize the names differ, and that makes sense to change the name. But to change the rules, the stream is a very slippery slope.
Well, for, wait in on it then?
I would talk about a banner. I mean, we want small business to grow, so I don't, I don't see a big deal.
Can I?
So what happens after May or whenever?
Well, um, I have to come back to council. Well. So, so my thing would be, I mean, obviously, that's the council's decision. Um, it would come back in April to see if the market could even go back in, to, um, business after that. And yes, um, I'm not trying to break the rules, but we do have lots of rules in the city. And people come before us and ask for, um, conditional rules. And with this being a new market and being stop, start, stop, start, stop, start, between all the hiccups, we need this boost. So maybe after, you know, um, if it's approved in the future after May twenty-fifth and it comes back in September, um, then maybe that's not the case. So it's really just a little bit of a, a jumpstart, if you will.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Again, I recognize that this is a, uh, something that the previous council gave me to come through.
I don't have, in that sense, the continuity of that makes sense to me. It's just a banner. It's more than just a banner. It's a precedent. It's saying that anybody can come in and change what they were, what they, what the business owner agreed to and accepted and said this was sufficient and we're good, and now it's not. And we're coming back to that again, and we're coming back to that again. That is a precedent. It is just a banner, but it is also a tone.
The flip side to that is we want small business to flourish.
Mm-hmm.
To let them advertise. We don't want to chase them out to the land or Sanford.
Well, you know, we've got a sign code this thick, and, you know, you've got businesses all up and down here. So is everybody going to have a banner like this? Well, she did it. We want, we want our banner out all, all the time. That's where I did it. And like, uh, Mr. Papello said, it sets a precedent, you know, and then so others follow that. And, you know, do we just start saying, oh, well, let's just throw our sign code out because we want to support small business?
Well, there was a new car wash that opened up on Enterprise. And he was told, somebody, I don't know who told him, but he was told he was not allowed to have any flags. Down the street was a new sushi restaurant that opened up and had all kinds of flags going, all in our city. So I don't, you know, I don't know, just what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it, this one's okay, but this one's not? I mean.
Well, that's like with this. Is this, this going to be okay? And then other people come in here and we say, no, you can't do it? Are the rules say you can't? So I, I just say we stop it here and then we don't go down that slippery slope and, and have to deal with that. My feeling. Yes, ma'am.
So we do have a code. We enforce the code by complaint now predominantly. Because that's the new requirement that's been put on us by the state of Florida. So on signs, if they're causing a safety issue, we do still enforce those. If they're in sight distance triangles or blocking any vision up and down the road, we take pre, pre, proactive action on that. Because, um, it's far more important to have safe roads than anything. Um, there is a point of law that, uh, I, I'm probably using that term wrong, um, relating to the first letter of rendition for your first market that went out. We did not bring that letter of rendition with us. If you wanted to put this on hold and go to the next item, I can go up to the office and get a copy. And that will tell us whether or not the three-day requirement was in there. We only brought council reports with us to this meeting. And I remember that there was some discussion about that, and the letter of rendition may have come out different than the city council report. But I just don't have the.
Let me, let me add my two cents. Mental.
If, if, if I could, um, yeah, I'm reading from, and I apologize, I'm not totally up to speed on this particular matter. But the agenda item indicates that the land development code limits temporary banners in a certain way. And from a procedural standpoint, and this maybe is an unfair question to staff, um, procedurally, um, it seems like what's being asked is, is an exception from that or a variance from that. And what would be, question for staff, what's the normal process for someone to get a variance from our land development code with regard to signs? Is that, is that what we're doing tonight? Was there an application for a variance or, I mean, how does this, how is it?
No, this isn't a variance. This is a.
This is under the special aver, uh, event permit process.
Okay, okay.
Negotiations on that permitted and not. And we do have the rendition letter dated from Becky.
September fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
And does it say about the banner and how many days when she did buy it? Or I just don't have it. I think I have it in my office, but I didn't have it.
And that's a good point. It's a special event permit. It's not just any business putting any banner out whenever they want. This is a, a special event that happens every Saturday and within guidelines that you guys have, you know, set. So I'm asking for that. It's not, you know, just any business on seventeen ninety-two putting any sign out. It's a long-term special event. I still had to go through the process and fill out.
So where's the line where it's a special event? That's what I'm.
Well, the businesses don't have to fill out a special event permit to put a sign out, is my point.
That, that's correct. So we have underneath, um, our process of, um, requirements for any, any businesses that can ask for some unusual use of their building structure. And staff can approve those, I think it's up to four times per year. So this is what the, um, Mr. Stradivicia was talking about. He wants to do something different than what is allowed in this business. And he wants to do it once a week. That then pops it over to a city council determination. Because it's no longer an occasional use. So if, if Ms. Marks were only running this, like, once a quarter, it becomes a staff day. Now, it's every weekend. It fundamentally changes the, the list of uses for the property. It comes before council. And in association with that, she says what she wants to do on this special event. Or asks what she wants to do on this special event. And what she is asking for is she wants to have the farmer's market, which isn't allowed in the parking lot of the Heritage Gym. And she wants to have the sign up all the time. She has the ability to ask for these. You have the ability to say yay or nay.
And it's not unheard of in other cities. The special event permit does work like that. Because I've, I've had contracts with Port Orange and Ormond and different places. And like she said, you can say yes or no, but I can ask.
The rendition letter that was issued on September fifteen, twenty twenty-three does not have any mention of.
So when someone does a special event, are banners automatically allowed? Or is that, that's a separate permit?
So think about it. Every time you consider a special event at our park, they ask for permission for the city to put the banner up on the fence. And we routinely do that. She's not doing this one at a, at a park. She's doing it on private property. And she's asking for a banner to be put up. So it would not come as a separate permit.
Right. So when.
Unless you were permanently attaching it to the ground.
So when it is a special event or a special business or however you want to term it, become a permanent business. If it's operating every week, I mean, it, it sounds to me like it's pretty much going to be there all the time. It's not in the future.
It's not my property.
Obviously, it's your event. That's.
This, this is the question that we bring to you. How much is, is appropriate?
Right.
You know, and that's, you know, a decision you, you all make. You know, um, is how much is appropriate? We know that staff can do it for a couple of times a year. Ask that.
Sounds well.
It comes to you and the policy and your part. So I, I can't answer that question. It will vary case by case.
Right.
So.
Okay, well, you know, I, I would say no to it at this point. Because I don't think a banner should be up twenty-four seven, every day of the week for a special event.
Okay, somebody want to make the motion?
Councilmember Darnes make the motion for a, for a temporary ban on this table.
I'll second it.
The motion got a second?
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Papello?
No.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimm?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
No. And the motion passes three to two. Okay, let's move on to, uh, HD, uh, review and consideration of special event application for all ages after dark. Egg hun, fundraiser at Mill Lake Park, Saturday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, from four P M to ten P M. Christine?
Here is a revised, you know, hard copy in case you have not accessed. Um, there were some changes brought to us. And they are, the, the, really, the last few pages you need are, um, I believe, the last three. Um, however, the first page, um, when you flip it over, has the highlighted changes. Um, so I will take you through the presentation, but that is a hard copy in case you did not see the changes on the online version. So for consideration tonight is the special event. It's titled All Ages After Dark Egg Hunt Fundraiser. It's to be held March thirtieth, the twenty twenty-four, from four P M to seven P M. Uh, the event overview, it will include all age, all ages, egg hunt, food trucks, vendors, bounce houses, and a DJ. The event layout that, that is different than what we, was originally shared with, um, with the issuance of the, or publication of the agenda is that the egg hunt area has been, um, modified. And the bounce house, um, aspect was, was added. Um, based on the changes, the, um, conditions have changed, and there would be nine conditions proposed. The applicant would need to complete a park rental agreement and pay applicable fees just for the electric for, for the DJ. Applicant would submit, uh, sign permit and payment of the applicable fee. Payment for one public works staff member for four hours worth ninety-three eighty. Applicant would need to provide written proof that the general liability provides, um, bounce house coverage. I do believe that that is going to be, um, that one will be deleted. And I believe that the applicant will be submitting the insurance rider that provides the coverage. Um, at the time this was prepared, I did not know that, um, but I've come to understand that's the case. Then the applicant would provide written authorization from Mount Zion A M E, A M E Church to allow the event to take place on the private par, property. If I take you back to the map, the area here, part of it from about here over is city. This area is the, the portion that, um, the church is going to, um, grant permission for them to utilize. There was a member before we started, or much earlier, from the church who had, um, said affirmative that they were going to grant that permission and they would get it to us in writing. But it's just a condition that would be met before the event takes place. Um, also, received today via email is the updated general liability, which was also a condition, um, because it, it effectively was going to expire March fourth. Um, but we, so some of these things have been met as we, um, as it's unfolding. Um, to finish going through, um, the conditions, the applicant would provide full cleanup of the event activities within the designated area by eleven. Um, provide the updated certificate, which we can check off. And then the city has also contemplated, um, whenever we receive a special event request, it gets broadcast to police fire parks, public works, for their consideration to weigh in on, you know, what are the pros, what are the concerns, and, you know, how do we manage this? Um, and this is a, a, the first time of event of this magnitude, um, by a private entity is going to take place that I'm aware of at Mill Lake Park after hours. And so the city took that into consideration and is preparing to provide personnel um, to help ensure the safety surrounding the event and the fact that it is the first time that, um, this would be held in the park after hours. Um, the, and the staff's recommendation is to help council to consider the special event application and approve the application with the, the nine conditions. Only because at this point I may be able to delete one, but I'll, I'll know for sure once, once I get another email or some information. Only because at this point I may be able to delete one, but I'll, I'll know for sure once, once I get another email or some information. Um, and then, or the council can consider the special event application and provide direction. Um, whether, whatever, I believe Mark Appicant or the city manager, do you want to add anything? Would our applicant would like to address?
Kelly Marks, five seventy Columbus Avenue. I wear many hats in the city, so I'm here in regards to, uh, being president of Backpack Buddies. Um, the person that's putting this event on for our organization couldn't make it tonight, so I'm gonna speak for them real quick. Um, the original plan was, we felt was not a safe plan, so that's why we switched it to just those two areas in the park to do the egg hunt. We are gonna have every single person that is in the egg hunt sign a waiver, which we have already sent over to Jeremy to look over or, um, risk management. To make sure that it covers everybody, everybody liability wise. Um, we have instructed anybody that's gonna attend to wear closed toed shoes, cause they would be looking through the wooded areas for the eggs. Um, and then, uh, to bring a flashlight. So the, the actual egg hunt will probably last about five minutes, to be honest with you. Um, because once they go in there and look and grab them, it's over. So that the most of the event is really just food, vendors, a D J, um, a thing for the families to come out and have a good time. And, uh, um, the, the member that was here from the church is actually the pastor, so you know, it's a, um, so she was agreeable to that. And we are gonna put caution tape around the areas where the egg hunt will be. Um, so that way we'll have volunteers around there watching. So nobody can go in until it's time to go in and they stay there and they monitor the egg hunt until it's over. Thank you. And also I'm recusing.
Do you have a, a park to public work for, for four hours?
But the, um, applicant has agreed to pay for, um, that's what they, they originally requested to have. And the city has discussed amongst themselves and the determination was to add two other personnel. Um, one parks and, um, and yes, one parks and one police personnel, um, at the event brought us no charge to help ensure, um, things are managed and, um.
So let, let me ex- extend on that thing. So Ms. Mars made it very clear, she's willing to pay for all of the services associated with this. She requested one parks person, she requested, um, an electric outlet and I think a twenty-five dollar sign permit. She's paying for that, so all of that's great. This is the first time that at nighttime, we've had a private group in there putting on an event. And I'm nervous about that. Okay, so even though she's not requesting this, I want to make sure I've got enough people out there on our first non-sponsored city event out there at nighttime to make sure that everything is safely run. So, you know, the events that the city has out there are holiday, we did a Christmas event once. And when we put those on, instead of having three hundred people, we may have two thousand people. But I bring in all personnel. I've got firemen, I've got E M Ts, I've got police officers. And I've had to post them in different areas where it's slippery along the banks to make sure no one falls or, you know, rock houses too hard. So just out of an abundance caution, and I understand it's not a city, city sponsored event, that, you know, I'm going to, you know, need to pay the extra funds for. I want to make sure that we have enough personnel. Maybe as time goes on, we have more nighttime events at Mill Lake Park. I won't feel that need, but until we get some experience under our belt, I, I would like to provide that. And I'm not sure that it's appropriate for the applicant to pay for something they don't feel they need. Um, because I'm the one that's, that's poor.
Do we do that with other events?
I don't have any other events out there at nighttime.
No, but I'm saying other events, do we provide free services for, for our police and public?
Yes, we do it all the time on city sponsored events. This is not a city sponsored event.
Right, so.
This is the first one of its kind and I'm, I'm nervous. I can always take away the extra personnel.
Right, I'm concerned with the safety, and even when we were talking about the, the fishing rodeo, uh, the concern a kid sliding in there. I don't see anything about lighting out there, that's a pretty dense area and everything, it's very dark at night. I don't see any, uh, lighting. And while I've got the floor, uh, the ladies in the, uh, cirrhosis club.
Call me, and they do an egg hunt every year, they've been doing it for forty years. And I don't understand why your events or your company, uh, continually is in conflict with what they're doing. Can't you come up with some more original kind of, uh, events? Uh, it, it's really stepping on their toes and it really bothers them, uh, that, eh, whatever they're doing, you try to copy or duplicate. And it just, it creates a lot of, uh, bad will within the community. So I think this is a very unsafe, uh, event. With just because one, it's at night, it's by water. I don't see where there's gonna be enough people to monitor. There was no mention, you said, well, we'll monitor with our people, but there was no mention of how many people or how many feet apart they're gonna be or anything of that nature.
Go, you done? Okay, I wanted to make sure you were done before I say that. Um, first of all, we can have a hundred volunteers there if that's what's, if that's what you want. We can bring the people to work it. As far as the cirrhosis club, no matter what I do, I'm not gonna make them happy. So I'm, I'm not competing with them, I've been doing events for twenty years. I was donated thousands of eggs from Amazon and I wanna do something with them for the kids. And, uh, it's a, and also what's different, it's not a copy. They, we're doing an all ages, that means that adults can come out and participate also, so it is different. Um, I've heard this for years with the breakfast with Santa and the lunch with Santa and, you know, it, it's just more for the kids to do. That's all it is, it's not a competition. And I knew I was gonna hear that. And I'm not out to get them, just so you know, I went and met with them about the Manatee Festival yesterday. Um, and I wanna support them, so, and I've invited them to our events. So it's not a competition for me, it's just more for the kids to do.
Really bothers me, I saw twice on Facebook today, this event being advertised. Like, it's gone through, you've already-
No, I can do that, I can advertise it, and if you guys turn it down, then I shut her down. But I need time to advertise the event if it's gonna happen.
I wouldn't advertise my-
Well, you don't do events, so you don't know how the process is, no, with no, you know. No. No.
So as the president, council member, you receive no funds?
I receive a paycheck from Backpack Buddies, yes. Does this fundraiser go to my paycheck? No.
Okay, so you do receive funds from Backpack Buddies?
Correct.
As a paycheck?
Yes.
Backpack Buddies is a board that you, you, to stories incorporated?
That's the same thing, yes, same entity.
So you receive a paycheck?
Yes.
And this is a fundraiser?
Correct.
For that company?
Correct.
You receive money?
Yes. How, how do you think nonprofits make money?
You've come, you've come to the council as you said.
Yes, and I recuse myself.
To raise money for a nonprofit that you receive personal gain?
I don't receive personal gain.
Do you receive a check?
Yes, but not from this event. You can allocate funds to not go towards paychecks.
Okay, so the company receives money from this event?
Yes.
And you receive a check?
I receive a p, a paycheck every week, yes.
Okay, so I don't know where the, I don't have the financials.
Okay.
About the optics, is the answer that you're gaveling?
Yeah. Of the city's money?
Yes.
Cause I'm paying for it. I didn't ask for city staff, I, I offered to pay. I did, and I offered to pay.
And you provided for all the costs associated with this?
I said I would, she's the one that said she needed more.
The optics as a council member, that you have just told, that you receive a paycheck?
Okay.
From a nonprofit that is raising money?
Mm-hmm.
Through this event?
Right.
Not sit well as a council member, if anybody else did that, I would not agree with it.
That's your alternative?
Are profiting, you are receiving financial gain.
I am not, it's a fundraiser.
Do you receive a check from that company?
I do, but it's a fundraiser. Have you ever worked for a nonprofit? How do you think that we feed the kids in this city? Do you think that I just?
Do we feed the kids in the city?
Yeah, my organization, yes. Yes, absolutely. I have a board, actually, I have bosses.
Bosses, and you receive a check?
Correct.
At company?
Correct, it's about seven dollars an hour.
Act that you receive a check, and you're up here as councilman?
Mm-hmm.
Act that those, those two things you cannot separate, that, that, that in the community would have, and people have come to me with that question.
I'm sure they have. They're called Marx haters, but you know what?
Oh, they're called orange-
You can call them what you want. I put sixty hours a week in.
You earn your money, but you're also coming to the council.
I am.
Asking for exception, this is, you're asking-
For an event that I'm paying for, yes. My organization is paying for it, yes, my organization. Who do you think's gonna put the event on?
You receive money.
For, in my paycheck?
There you go, thank you.
Have to weigh in on your personal opinion about such a matter. To me, that does not make sense. That to me, there should be a separation. We should not come up here and have business organizations that we're associated with and receive money. We have influence, we, we are council members. Is that the responsibility that we should be, we should be?
I'm not asking for money, I'm asking for approval. An event.
Thank you. I think it borders, uh, on ethics violations personally, but that's the best story. I, I don't have the financials to just, excuse me, may I speak now?
I do not have the financials to parse out the difference of what you're making here. But to me, it, eh, we should be a thousand feet from this. And you're, and you're completely com- comfortable with it. And I, and community folks have come to me and have, have implored me to ask that question. And you have no problem?
No, cause I've had people question me also. Okay, do others wanna weigh in on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I have only one question, and I'm thinking about the church. Do you have them on your, a rider on your insurance that will protect them if anything happened on their property? You do?
Anyone from the public wanna speak for this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion, further discussion. No one has anything? Okay, um, I'd entertain a motion, there is one. All right, I guess it dies for lack of a-
Motion. Okay, let's move on. Oh, here we go. Okay, let's move on to reports. Uh, city manager report.
Yes, I have, um, one thing I wanted to make sure that I, I have clear to, I was asked a question. And that was regarding your earlier motion in which I was instructed to come up with, uh, where you all selected option two, optional three. Which is postponing making a decision. The question that came up is, am I now going to apply for demolition of the shuffleboard court? And my answer was, no, I'm not. And I just wanted to make sure that that was what you've had in mind when you're postponing, making a decision. I'm not tendering any applications until such time as we get more information.
I believe that's what the question was.
Thank, okay, thank you, so.
Okay.
And anything else I had, I've forgotten.
Anyone have anything for the city manager? Okay, moving on to the city clerk's report.
Nothing.
Great, yeah, we're, hey, it's almost midnight, moving on. Okay, new business, anyone have any new business?
No.
Okay, I do too, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd like for the council to, uh, consider, uh, changing the start time of the council meetings. I think that, uh, six o'clock would be more conducive to staff and, uh, the council's flow. Tonight is midnight, you know, well, it would save thirty minutes. And I think that a six o'clock start would not impede, I, I should not speak for others, but that's the proposal. If the council would entertain such a new business.
And if we were to go with this, would you just do a head nod right now, Bill, and be done with it, or we need to bring it back?
It's not as simple as that, we're gonna have to amend your council rules and procedures, and I've gotta confirm that this is not gonna be in any way inconsistent with anything else in, uh, that's in, or that's a resolution or something like that.
If we, uh, want this to come back for discussion, then-
That's, we're on our new business, so.
Yeah, okay, so is everybody want this to come back? Is it, we got a no?
I'm good the way it is.
You're good the way it is, Fran?
I've talked about it.
Okay, there's one, two, Lisa?
I'll talk about it.
Three, Anthony?
Yes, please.
Okay, so bring it on back.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, my new business is, I think we need to have a joint meeting between the city council and the historic preservation board. Uh, because I think they have gone off the rails a little bit, uh, with some of their things that they're doing, and there's, I believe-
Powers that we've, uh, given them, that I think we really, really all need to sit down and talk to together. So it's not like we're saying, hey, you gotta do this, do that, blah, blah, blah. We get their input, we have our input, okay? Uh, got yay, Lisa? Yeah, three, four, five, okay. Okay, everybody's on board with that one? Uh, approval of minutes, we've, there's no minutes. Uh, and at this point, we'll go to comments. Anybody have any comments tonight? Down here, no comments? Okay, uh, Ms. Darms needs a nap, please note in the record. Okay, uh, at this point, I'll, I'll, uh, take a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
Could everyone send me their ideas of what they would like to discuss with the historic preservation board? So that we can work on an agenda.
Great.
I would suggest that you start with a review of the existing ordinance. And that at your next meeting, you postpone adoption of the upcoming ordinance until such time as we've had this joint meeting. I, I've got to tell you that in reviewing the demolition ordinance, what I've discovered is that it is kind of morphed into a certificate of appropriateness. And that if you are removing or demolishing the existing windows, you need to get their permission to put in the new building permit for the windows. So I, I keep running into, you know, Mr. Peter said if we're going to change the type of gutter we have, we need a demolition permit to take down our existing gutter and put up a new one. And, you know, I, I've got to say, I was kind of surprised by this. Um, and I, I don't know, I think most of it's handled administratively, but I'd like to work with Becky on crafting this.
Okay.
In preparing for this, I found that at one point, the historic preservation board in two thousand eight, many- in 2008, many powers were removed from them, and those same powers were reinstated in 2017, so.
Might be helpful just to have a, to your point, I think it would be helpful just to, for the city council. For this city council to understand about exactly what the, how the role of the historic preservation board as it is now, and how that has changed, no pun intended, historically, through, through, through the, you know, the existence of the board, and what, what its job is, what services is to be provided to this council? Created by this council.
Right, right, right.
It's supposed to be advisory only, right?
Correct, correct.
Well, no, no, it is not supposed to be advisory only, you all delegated.
Correct.
A huge amount of authority.
And that, and that's what I'm saying.
I think what Harry meant was, it's supposed to be, right? That was the key word, and it's not at this point, right? Is that?
So, then he needs to get trimmed back to that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So, do you.
That's why I wanted to bring it forward.
Do you have a joint meeting?
Yes, we'll bring it all out in a joint meeting, yes, that's exactly.
This is having two councils when they're here.
Right, and to me, the bureaucracy, the.
And we're in the meeting with them, you want to bring that out, that we want to adjust things, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're going to sit down and, you know, tell them what we think they should be doing, and what they're doing, and have.
Well, maybe it would be good to go over all of it first, with everyone, including the historic preservation board.
Right.
And just, you know, maybe we start with the history.
Okay, well, we'll leave that to staff to work that out.
Okay, well, if you have any concerns, please get them to me, and I'll try and figure out a way to bring them out.
I just don't want to, I mean, we're going back and forth, back and forth.
And that's what it's going to be?
Right.
Can I ask?
I think the chief's out of sleep, he wouldn't do much.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, I mean, you know, I represent you guys.
Right.
I represent the council, and you're the ones that pass ordinances that create codes, and that's, that's chapter two right now of your code book right now, that creates historic preservation board, and prior to this council, other councils have weighed in on exactly what they want from, from something called historic preservation board. And so, I think that from a policy standpoint, this council, not historic preservation board, but this council has a responsibility to create a policy, exactly, you know, what is it that you want from historic preservation board? You're the ones to decide what you want from an advisory board, and/or, or do you want that board to have powers like your planning commission, which has some final says on what things can, how things can be built in Orange City? Well, for example, your city managers indicated we don't want to move forward arguably with a certificate of appropriateness, if that's going to expand the powers of historic preservation board. So, those are the kind of things that, you know, do you want, do you want to have that conversation just up here on a discussion and action item first, or do you want to, or do you want to, or do, no, I mean, I'm asking you, staff.
Just one workshop, would it be?
How about this, you've all tabled your second reading.
Right.
The.
Certificate of appropriateness.
Certificate of appropriateness until your first meeting in March. If Becky has enough time.
Right.
We can do an overview of all of the powers granted to the historic preservation board at that time, per your request. If not, we can ask that it be tabled again until we can do that.
Right, okay.
Is that fair?
And will we, will we be amending the ordinance to what we are comfortable with? Is that what?
No, but no, it would just put the certificate, it would put the second reading in context of the existing powers of the board, and then if you didn't like the existing powers, you could say, "I want to further amend the ordinance to modify those existing powers."
Y'all really need to sit down and read chapter two and the section regarding the powers and the duties and the responsibilities that we've given to this historic preservation board. They're doing their job that we asked them to do, so if we're going to change that job, we need to change that job.
I think that's a better alternative than sitting down with them first.
Opposed to sitting down with them and, and talking things out, but, like you said, it starts with us, right? So, we have to set something.
It's up to however you want to do it, you know, for me, it's what's going to be most productive. Okay, so, we're not going to be setting up a joint workshop, but we're, what we're going to be doing.
Not at this point.
Not at this time, that is correct, we're going to be working on a discussion and action item for you to, to think, to, to, most likely to delay the second reading again, table second reading of the certificate of appropriateness, and to bring back for your discussion, the extent and the scope of chapter two, historic preservation board.
Right, right.
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay.
I read chapter two, because yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a lot to read, yeah. Well, it's not that long, but there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot there.
So, I've got to tell you, having, you know, spent the weekend with chapter two. And the music, and the.
Oh, okay. I can email it.
Sure, yeah, oh, there you go.
What I found is that there's some inconsistencies within the chapter, because it has been repealed multiple times, so, and put back.
Okay, everybody good? Anything else to say? Okay, now, we'll go back to the motion to adjourn. You made it?
Second.
Second, you got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed saying nay. We're adjourned.
Pillow and blanket, please.